I would like to call us to order. Good evening, I'm the chairman of the planning commission. And we will not have any petitions or land use approvals tonight. So I will go to this part of it. The meeting is videotaped, so it's important that only one person speak at a time and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition. We do not have any petitions we'll be approving tonight. If there are no questions, we will have a public comment period after the regular presentation. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Bland.
Present.
Commissioner Faust.
Present.
Commissioner Orange. Commissioner Nash. Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Oystash.
Present.
Commissioner Faust. I'm sorry. Commissioner Klot.
Here.
Commissioner Weinberg.
Present.
Okay. We're going to proceed to new business. We are going to have a presentation this evening about zoning ordinance rewrite. We're going to start with Article Four, Use Standards, and then Article Five, Site Standards.
All right.
Yep.
Good evening, planning commission.
I'm Andy Amott with Givens Webster. We helped draft this language. So to begin our presentation, I'd like to just go over kind of where we're at here. So obviously, we talked about Articles One, Six, and Seven at the December meeting. We took a meeting off in January, and now we're here to present Articles Four and Five. The key upcoming meetings will be, one, regarding Article Two definitions, which will not be much of a presentation, but Article Three as well, which Article Three will be the zoning district and zoning map, which obviously has a very big impact on zoning. Lastly, we, at a later date, will have a future planning commission public hearing on the full ordinance. So jumping into Article Four, that is the use standards. These are the standards that apply to specific land uses only. They help address anticipated impacts related to land use. These are the type of land uses that may have some sort of nuisance or externality to them. Oftentimes, things like traffic, noise, emissions, things like that. These were kind of scattered throughout the existing ordinance in the, kind of the standards for permitted uses section, as well as the permitted uses after special approval sections of your current ordinance. And we're putting them into this article where they are a bit more tidy, in our opinion. We also moved standards that were embedded in definitions and other areas of the ordinance into these use standards. So some of the key use standards that were existing throughout the ordinance that did not entail, that we are not proposing any major changes to are the following: cemeteries, commercial greenhouses, drive-in theaters, homeless shelters, hospitals, junkyards, marijuana establishments. That was obviously a very new and recent endeavor by the city to regulate marijuana establishments. We are not changing anything there, other than references to districts and updated, just references based on having a whole new ordinance. No changes to place of worship, penal, correctional institutions and detention facilities, public recreation areas, public utility buildings, radio and television towers, solar energy systems, wireless communication facilities. Throughout the presentation, we have a couple little icons. So the big flashbulb, that entails that that was something that we wanted to cover from the master plan, the 2022 recently adopted master plan. The little notepad entails changes from the zoning audit that were discussed. People in a circle there were items that were, we gathered a lot of public input on from some of the public input sessions over the summer. And then the little medal are, entail recommendations from the APA or MAP. Those are the professional organizations that kind of govern, not govern, but kind of give us guidance as planners and zoning administrators. So accessory dwelling units were one of the key use standard categories we provided new language on. So the direction as of right now are to permit ADUs in all zoning, residential zoning districts. That being said, there will be standards that'll govern these. So there is going to be an owner occupancy requirement, that the owner lives at either the principal house on site or the ADU, and that these are not to be used as short-term rentals. We also provide setback height, maximum number, size, parking appearance, and no land division ability regulations. So I think at this point, as we kind of go through the slides, it'd be nice to hear any feedback you have, planning commission, on any of these items. So let's start with ADUs.
Okay. I have one question, and I don't know, I'm not sitting here comparing it to the old code. With the representation of the ADUs here, are they allowed, or is it acceptable, to have separate street addresses? Or would they only be covered with, like, Unit A, Unit B kind of designation?
That's a good question for city staff on how you designate street addresses.
Typically, that's provided by the post office. They're the ones who decide on addresses.
Do we know of any standard they have for what? I've been in the city sagging long enough, I know there are houses where they were originally single-family. They end up with three apartments, and sometimes it's ABC, or it's 1107 and a half.
Right.
Something like that. Do we coordinate it all in the assigning of street addresses?
Typically, not. It's a coordination with the assessing office and the post office. So there are a number of buildings, for example, on Court Street, that are commercial buildings that have separate addresses, but they're actually just one address, really.
For our taxing purposes, it's a single address.
For our taxing purposes, and that's the only thing that we're really all that concerned about.
So we would expect this to continue as a single taxing entity?
Yes.
They are not to be sold separately, they are?
Correct. Which is the requirement that you have an owner occupancy. It's the owner of that property is receiving that tax bill, and the water bill and everything else.
And I would say can it two standards govern that in a way? The, one, the owner occupancy, and then the seven B as drafted says, "The accessory dwelling unit shall not be subdivided or otherwise segregated in ownership from the primary dwelling unit."
Might be covered under that, what a separate street address would look like.
Yeah.
Only separate ownership.
Well, I would thi, yeah, I'll just, I would think the city, as building permits are pulled, the building department and assessing will obviously need to have an address listed. And that's worked out kind of administratively.
Of course, it has to be the existing address that you're pulling the permit for.
Yeah, on the house's property. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
May have misspoke, though, the water bill may be separate, but it would be the taxing, yeah.
Oh, if it had separate utility service added.
And the permits of ADUs are something that both the master plan discussed in the missing middle section of the master plan, as well as it's something that the Michigan Association of Planning has covered pretty thoroughly in some of their documentation, especially the 2002 zoning reform toolkit for more housing options that they published. So it's definitely a theme that is guiding a lot of cities right now. All right, moving on to a couple more use standard categories. So we didn't do much to the adult businesses, other than it established a clear intent statement. Adult foster care, we removed the 1,500-foot spacing requirement. That's a pretty big distance, especially as many communities have an aging population. It is important that adult foster care is provided for in communities. So we just want to make sure we're removing that barrier for potential adult foster, state licensed adult foster care facilities. Drive-throughs, we create some standards for those. We distinguish a little bit between services, so things like banks or pharmacies, as well as restaurants. We require main access from a major thoroughfare. Secondary access can be on a different street, but that's got to obtain approval from PC, from U. And we emphasize compliance with site standards, things like trash lighting, waiting, vehicle waiting or queuing. And as you'll see later on, we establish revised standards for things like those in the site standards. Any questions about these three categories?
Yes. Going back to the adult foster care spacing, is there any spacing requirement left? I mean, I don't really want to see a dozen foster care house, houses next to each other filling up a whole block. That's not even the intent of the adult foster care system. They're supposed to be in a neighborhood, but if you bunch them all together, you've lost the neighborhood aspect. I mean, there's the design from the state requirement.
The state does not have a distancing requirement.
Not a distance, but they do have, their goal with adult foster care is to intermingle amongst a neighborhood. That's why you have adult foster care. But if you allow them to all be the neighborhood themselves, then you've lost that impact. You're just making it a bunch of neighborhood of adult foster care homes. And that, to me, that defeats the original purpose. So I'm not sure I agree with removing the, either the, that 1500, or at least not having something in there.
You would like to see something?
I think you almost need to, if you're going to abide by the purpose of the adult foster care standard, of their purpose.
Does anybody else have any thoughts on it?
I do have a question about...
I mean about, well, I guess it doesn't matter.
From the ownership standpoint, I have seen where a given operator is operating adjacent properties as adult foster care. I don't know if their licensing is, it is all licensed as one, so it looks like one, or were they in place before maybe a standard was established?
So there are different types. So, for example, in the single-family residential, adult foster care homes are permitted, and it limits six, and the owner has to occupy the building.
Okay.
When you get into the two-family and multifamily districts, then there are additional permitted adult foster care homes that, group homes that are permitted within those areas.
Okay, so part of the answer to Commissioner Klot's question could be, if it's in a single-family district, or?
Correct. And it's almost a nightmare to try and enforce, because the state will issue the adult foster care to someone, and typically zoning is not even checked. We're not notified. We have to go on the city, or the state's website to find out which ones have been licensed. And a lot of them will get licensed, operate, and then they go out of business.
Or is the intention to keep a distance standard for the, for the large group homes that don't need an owner occupancy, or a manager or caregiver occupancy?
I would encourage it. I just don't think it's a good idea to, I mean, actually, you defeat the whole purpose of the existence of adult foster care home in the neighborhood when your neighborhood is adult foster care homes.
Probably in single and two-family residential, we could probably keep that distancing requirement.
Okay.
I'd say that having a small cluster of adult foster carriers would actually make it a sustainable business model and allow for reasonable staffing.
So in the R1 district, though, you have to be an owner occupied. You have to live there yourself. So clustering them like that in R1 would not be permitted.
The only way, it seems like it would end up is if a family-run business had, for example, a husband is this house, a wife is this one, and the daughter is this one. I suppose people try to work around almost anything.
Don't give anybody any ideas.
That would be a problem, too.
So is it maybe a distance requirement in the R1 and R2 zones for all AFC home types, or?
I think at least something. Maybe you could, 1500, but I have a real problem with, I mean, if what you want is adult foster care home neighborhoods, I suppose that's a different thing, but that's not what I think would be what you want, at least not from the purpose of adult foster care homes.
It'd also be all for people being allowed to age in their neighborhoods, even if they have to leave their houses. So things that support people being able to age in the neighborhood that they've lived in for a long time makes sense from a zoning perspective for me. If you can maintain the relationships with your neighbors that you've had for a long time, that's the beautiful thing.
The question becomes, how do we do that? Maybe a smaller, you know, maybe a thousand, I don't know, but somehow removing it all together just is a recipe for destroying the whole concept of adult, you're just making a business model, and you just put them all in the same neighborhood.
Or do the, or do the adult foster care family homes, the one to six adults, anywhere with no distance buffer, but it's the large group homes, which are more resident, more attend, or more cared residents?
Those are more the business model.
Mm-hmm. So maybe that's what we have the buffer for, but keep, you know, don't require a buffer for the family homes, which are the one to six with the owner residing there.
That would at least be more, follow me, the idea of what adult foster care home is, or should be anyway.
So just, the current zoning ordinance, adult foster care family home is up to six. Adult foster care, small group home is up to 12, and then adult foster care large group home could be up to 20 adults.
Those latter two are totally business models.
So those group homes are more so what I think you want the buffer for?
At least, though, yes.
Yeah, okay. We can do that. Everybody in a general agreement with doing the buffer for the group homes, but keeping no buff, but eliminating any buffer for just the family homes, the one to six?
The buffer would stay at 1500?
Yes, for the, for the group homes, yeah.
Yeah, the larger, because I can think of an example right on Michigan Avenue where we had kind of issues.
Okay.
Two side-by-sides.
Yeah.
Where there were large, large homes. On the other perspective, I have two in my neighborhood, and it's fine. I mean, they're on different blocks. What I find, that the one across the street, excellent place, outside a lot of times, and even picking up trash in the neighborhood. So there can, you know, you can look at this in two different ways, I think. And so I welcome them. I have other things in the neighborhood as well, so.
But I think keeping this difference between family group home and a business small group home makes sense.
Got it. I think we have enough here to move on and know what we're going to revise it to. Anything else on this slide?
Not for me.
No, I'm good. All right. So we have a couple standards for multi-unit dwellings, as well as two-unit dwellings. There's honestly not a ton there. The, let me see here. The, for certain multiple unit dwellings of over, I believe over a certain number of units, I believe the number we had was 75, they're allowed some sort of accessory uses, so things like newsstands, delis, small restaurants, little personal service shops. I think those, we were keeping that language in, because it's nice to provide those type of services to such a large group of housing units. It's a more sustainable function for the community to have that amenity and not have to travel by car elsewhere for those type of things. So we are, we are providing that still. We're also requiring the access for these to be off a major or secondary thoroughfare as well. Single and two-family dwellings, we are just kind of moving things around. There were a lot of standards for single-family dwellings in the definitions section of your current ordinance, in that probably shouldn't be the place where you have actual tangible standards for development. You should keep definitions for describing what the use is, but not saying how and where and the manner in which it develops as. So we've just kind of rearranged it in a way. And we're also moving mobile home provisions to a separate section as well. Any questions here?
Just a comment. What, what is the, the bottom line for that, for having markets and stuff? What was the least amount of units?
75 in the building or in the whole apartment building group.
Okay.
Apartment complex.
That seems high. Is there a standard for that?
I believe that was actually, I believe there's a similar standard in your current ordinance. I think we were actually thinking about moving that down at one point during the subcommittee meetings. I guess, Cassie or Bob, do you?
Okay.
Because we could probably shrink it if you, if you'd like, if you'd like it to be 50 or 20. I think it's reasonable to provide a level.
I'd like to finish my thoughts on that. So I have a unit in my neighborhood, that's going to be 38 units. To me, that doesn't seem right to put a market inside there.
Yeah.
Okay. But when you're looking at 75 and above, looking to the Second National Bank, the last developer that came in there, that was 120 units, and it did have grab-and-go markets.
Okay.
So that, I'm trying to think of 75, two times the size of the Jefferson apartment building. Yeah, that could work as a bottom.
Okay.
So I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. But I've got some other things, too, on the multi-unit dwellings.
If I can follow up on Commissioner's comments, the 75 seems reasonable, but I guess what I'm not sure of is how big of things would be allowed in those size units.
That's the next size down.
Yep, so 2% of the gross floor area.
Yeah.
Yep.
I guess that.
It'd still be pretty, pretty small.
Just, just as an example, if you had 10,000 rentable square feet, the most you could have is a 200-square-foot little shop.
Now, is that cumulative for multiple different, like you mentioned, newsstands and, you know, items and things like that? Has that become cumulative?
Yeah, it says, yeah, for such accessory uses, so I would think that that's cumulative. We can clarify that, though, if you'd like.
I'm just wondering, because that'd be a pretty small restaurant.
Yeah, I think it's, and I don't know if the goal is to provide, you know, actual seating, sit-down, but more so a stand.
A new stand itself, you know, not just a machine, but a?
Yeah.
Yeah, and don't confuse it with a mixed-use development, where the entire, like, ground floor, for example, would be commercial and everything above it would be residential.
Yeah, all right. That's probably pretty good, though.
Okay. Which, these are the type of things that could be permitted perhaps in the R3 district, where R3 is not necessarily like a, one of your mixed-use districts that you've been used to with the riverfront mixed-use. It's more so resident, single-use residential. Whereas in the mixed-use districts, the RMU, which we're actually turning into the MU, we're ditching the R of those, we, you can do mixed-use, as Amy mentioned, where you can have a formal restaurant on the bottom floor and then, you know, a couple dwelling units above it.
And what district is that in?
That would be for the MU, the RM, so the mixed-use zoning districts.
So that would cover the DDA, our DDA area?
Yep, yep. It would be that riverfront DDA, Old Town, Downtown. There's a few expansions that we are mapping out right now, that we're going to go over next meeting, is a lot of the districts.
Yeah, the reason why I bring that up is because there was a particular unit, when I was in Birmingham, Alabama, and on their four corners, they did that. So the first floor was commercial restaurants, and then above, you can think the Second National Bank as an example, they had condos and apartments. And then a rooftop restaurant in overseeing area. So there was quite a bit of, and it was amazing, because it gives you a lot of flexibility. So I would like to make sure that we see something like that, so if somebody does want to put a rooftop venue, restaurant, that we can do that.
Yeah, I think we're primarily talking, though, about the multi-family R3 areas, where these accessory uses are simply to support the people who are living in that. We're not talking really about the mixed-use downtown areas.
Okay.
I mean, we have that now with, like, for example, the Bancroft used to have, you know, the bar restaurant below and some retail, and then apartments above, so.
Different district.
It's not like we're eliminating that, it's just, I think we're more focused on these R3 multi-family districts.
Okay, okay, got it.
More single-use multi-family dwellings.
Got it, got it. Which tends to go outside that DDA district.
Correct.
Yeah. Got it, okay. Confusion.
All right, anything else on this slide?
I do. Because you're talking about multi-unit dwellings, and you're also talking about in neighborhoods, which I kind of wanted to round back to the ADUs, because we kind of moved off that a little bit quickly before I could bring this up. So you said parking. So we're starting to create a, create an urban environment walk, with walkability. We need to focus on parking, because we have issues in the city right now that I have an issue with, that you can't park on the streets from 3:00 AM till 6:00 AM. And that was back in the day, when we used to plow the city at that point in the, in the wintertime. I think we need to get rid of it, and we need to get, we need to change that part of our ordinance if we are going to seriously create this kind of a neighborhood system, because you're not going to pack all the cars, and I live in the city, and people in this audience that live in the city know what I'm talking about. You're not going to pack four cars or five cars all in that area trying to have an ADU. So I'm entertaining that we really take a look at that while we do this, and it's just like any other big urban city, and here's my, here's my, how I can back that up.
So Commissioner Oystash, I don't believe that's part of the zoning ordinance, though, so that would be a discussion at council table, not at the planning commission table.
Gotcha, all right. Okay.
Yeah, not to mention the fact that you've got single-family units without an ADU that have parking problems.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I don't have everything in front of me right now.
Yeah.
But I know it's there, I've got it on my docket back home.
I just, I know we have a lot to get through, so I want to make sure that this board, if they spoke this time, it's tasked, so.
I think it's worth mentioning. All right, thanks. We'll move on.
If I may follow up on what you're talking about?
We do have a whole off-street parking, many pages of this.
Yeah, maybe ask a question. And it's something that, again, going back to the idea of a walkable city, hopefully you will have more mass transit, which means you have to accommodate people's vehicles if you're going to have them, you know, park someplace and drive. And the same goes for, it might be stalled somewhat, but eventually we may get into more, if not exclusive, electric vehicles, or even another kind of vehicle, and autonomous vehicles. If you have autonomous vehicles, those vehicles aren't going to have to be someplace when they're not being used. It's like a cab system, cabbies are, you don't want to sit in your streets, they need someplace to go and then be called. So what are we doing addressing the potential for autonomous parking needs when they're not in use, and also mass transit vehicles when they're not in use? I think that, I think you are correct, Council.
We have enough parking lots.
Yeah, we have, I don't know about parking lots, but it's something, some, some temporary place, or some way to accommodate that future need, and now is the time to try and look at it.
What you're bringing up is actually something that I thought about before we brought down Ramp One. That would have been a perfect hub for Uber, Lyft, charging stations, but now we have a single lot, but still could think of those areas like that, where you could have, because you're thinking Waymos, that's.
All of those.
Yeah. Yeah, driving those cars.
I'm gonna agree that I think we're getting outside the parameters of zoning here. That's more like master plan stuff.
But if someone wants to put in a parking lot, then that has to be addressed because they want to build a parking lot for autonomous vehicles, say. I don't know, you, you wanna ignore that now or I don't think it's a good idea?
I would think the autonomous vehicle company would probably not wanna park their cars on the street for liability purposes. They would probably create some sort of off-site storage yard in a way.
So that's a zoning issue.
Yeah, which could be maybe permitted in the, in I-one, the industrial, the M-one, the industrial district.
So I, I guess I'm saying that we need to at least have it on our radar, including it.
Yep.
The autonomous vehicles just keep driving.
Well, they can, but they don't have to.
They do.
It's, you know. Hopefully that would not be their model to continue doing that, but it's all, yeah, it's a question of can we address it in some way now?
Yeah, and, and again, if, if you just wait a little bit, there's several slides that deal with off-street parking that are coming up in this presentation, so maybe that discussion.
Well, again, too, I apologize for not being able to get through all of it today, cause I just got it in my inbox last night. Thanks.
I think we can go ahead.
All right. So in terms of eating and drinking establishments, we are eliminating the whole historic-themed restaurant as a use. That's, we, we're generally not regulating by theme. I don't think that's a great idea, cause I think there could be, um, you know, freedom of expression that you wanna watch out for. So I don't think we wanna start regulating by theme anymore. Um, we're creating outdoor seating standards and we're also creating standards for restaurants that are adjacent to residential in the mixed-use one zone. So the lowest density mixed-use zone. Um, home occupations, we've done a little bit there in that text. Um, we're allowing a little bit of interior renovating for, um, for homes to accommodate a home occupation, just because there's a greater workforce, you know, working from home these days. And that's as long as no exterior alterations are made, you s- you still can't make your home occupation look or function like a business. It's gotta be most, you know, for the most part, the worker's, uh, home. Uh, allowing a little bit more parking flexibility and then limit, limiting the traffic generated by use. Uh, any questions here quickly?
Do we need to regulate yard sales and zoning?
A lot, so some ordinance, some cities choose to do it in their general code, but I would think it, it just made sense to put here, um.
Well, it's always been.
It's always been in zoning, too.
It just feels like Scope Creek.
Well, I understand that, however, from an enforcement standpoint, uh, we have a lot of people who have permanent yard sales and so we're trying to.
But my office is across the street from a permanent yard sale.
Well, if it's consistent with what we already have in other ordinance, then that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This isn't a change.
All right. We provide a little bit of revised language in mobile homes and mobile home parks. Um, that involves an updated intent statement, a created minimum lot size and created requirements for storage of recreational equipment. We made some small revisions to childcare centers, um, including the reference to the State Childcare Organization Act. Um, we, we're also removing the, kind of the off-street parking A, uh, uh, in naming convention. Um, we're now just calling these principal use parking lots. And we're creating a setback requirement for all property lines on these and these reference site standards, which refer to lighting, landscaping, et cetera. Um, any questions on these couple themes?
Just a question for staff. Do we currently have any mobile home parks in the city?
No, we do not.
I did not think so.
And those are regulated by the Mobile Home Commission.
Yes.
They review the site plans, right?
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, we have very little authority.
We don't allow mobile homes on a particular site. It has to be, um, and so distinguishing the difference between, um, a pre-manufactured home and a mobile home. Pre-manufactured home comes in on a trailer bed, but it's permanently attached to a foundation and attached to all the public utilities. Mobile homes, on the other hand, are not and that, they're, so, and we don't permit those unless they're in a mobile home park, which are regulated by the Mobile Home Park, or Mobile Home Commission or whatever they are.
Yep, okay.
Is the mobile home defined because we're starting to see some of these packing containers become housing units?
Again, it's, it, we allow them, but they still have to meet all the requirements and have to be permanently attached to a foundation.
It, it would fit within here.
It would not be considered a mobile home.
What happens if it's on wheels?
We don't permit it on a site. It has to be a mobile home park.
All right, good.
And actually the mobile, I think they require that the wheels have to be removed and it's sit on a pier.
Next slide. Uh, golf courses, uh, we just put a little bit of language there that uses customarily accessory to the course are permitted. Uh, temporary buildings, we provided a little bit of language on the, um, uh, one of those is that they need to be located the greatest reasonable distance from the adjoining residential property and, uh, from view from the public right of way. Um, in instances where I think we're, you know, the, uh, developer who's building something needs some, needs to use perhaps a little bit of park space or a little bit of public right-of-way to use some temporary storage of a, of a, of, of, of equipment. That can be approved by the city, but it would prob, it would need to demonstrate that it's, you know, there's, um, really no other place to put the equipment. Um, and there's a maximum timeframe for these temporary buildings as well. Um, outdoor storage, so we provided, uh, particular standards on tho, on outdoor storage. So that was something we heard from the public with our little logo, little icon there. Um, the public was definitely interested in providing, uh, adequate screening for outdoor storage facilities. Um, those can be, so outdoor storage can either be, you know, accessory storage of, let's say, a few pallets or whatnot behind a business. But we even go so far to even regulate the storage situations, like in the heavy industrial districts, where there could be a storage yard per se of equipment or, uh, or vehicles, um, where really the, the principal use is storage itself and it's not really something accessory to an existing principal building. So we're, we're going to allow outdoor storage without a principal building to be in that heavy industrial zoning district only. Um, I know the city did not wanna see, people did not wanna see those in, let's say, a business district or even the lower-scale industrial district. Um, people wanted to make sure that those are kept, you know, in those industrial, heavy industrial districts only, which are common, commonly, you know, separated from residences and whatnot. Um, any questions on these couple use standards?
I'm just trying to go through the draft here and find where golf courses and temporary buildings are mentioned.
Yep, so temporary golf courses are mentioned in, um.
Four twenty-seven?
For, yep, page four twenty-seven, section four point two-three.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Somehow, oh, there.
The presentation is a little.
Cause it's under P, private parks.
Yeah.
Looking for golf course, got it. Thank you.
Any, any, and then temporary buildings are, um,
Four thirty-three?
Yeah, four thirty-three, page four thirty-three, section four twenty-eight.
It does help if you can give us a site, cause we are bouncing around.
Yeah.
Right, there we go, got it.
There are notices, there's a little red, some references of what, what are the purpose of those?
Yeah, those are just, so right now the draft is really, let's say, a ninety-five, ninety-six percent finished product. Those are just a few little places where we need to cap off the product and link all of our references together.
Gotcha.
Um, I think we did that a little bit better in Article Five, which I would say is more complete from a reference standpoint. Article Four was kind of, in terms of the order of operations, we kind of wrapped up this draft before we did a lot of Article Five. So that means we still need to complete some references to Article Five.
All right, thank you.
All right, I can move on to the next slide. We do have a lot to discuss on Article Five, so that's why I'm just trying to be a little bit brief here going through the key changes of Article Four. So, we provide standards for, uh, vehicle repair and service. Um, we have pedestrian circulation requirements. Just because these sites are very auto-heavy, we don't want, you know, there, there is, um, a little bit of, uh, of risk of pedestrians being hit by vehicles when within a site. So we just wanna make sure that pedestrians are taken care of as well. Um, we have requirements for number of pumps. And I just wanna say that when we drafted these requirements, um, for the passenger, um, it's, it's section four point two-nine, uh, on page four dash three-four, for your reference. But when we drafted those, uh, the intention was to group gas stations under these as well. But we've since, as a team, we've kind of since diverted from that and we will have all of the gas station relevant language in this, in this section actually taken out and put it, put into its own gas station section. Um, so I just wanted to note that for when you see, uh, your next draft of this, it'll look a little di- different, but the standards right now would not change.
Do you care about typos right from us right now?
Uh, y-
I, I think it is.
Yeah.
Number six under vehicle repair and service, there's an S in there and I just think that does belong.
Yep, I see that. Thank you.
Maybe a minor, but you correct it while we see it.
Appreciate it. And then, uh, vehicle wash establishment, we provide some standards for those. Um, we wanna restrict vacuums, the rear and side only, yard, yard only. That's, vacuums have become kind of a industry, uh, a new industry, uh, commonality for these places. A lot of these places have huge vacuums and they kind of show them off in a manner that, you know, they're large and they are visually distracting, I would say, as I drive by these places myself. And we wanna put them in the side and rear yards.
When you say aside, does that, what happens if that a corner is really a mar? And if it, it's on the street side, you now have it just as bad as before. Can you restrict it to the turn, street side?
I think the way we're moving towards our definitions is side street would still be a front yard.
Okay.
So in that manner, uh, it, it couldn't be in a street, you know, in a corner lots. You know, side street gets hard.
Just a question, you mentioned you're gonna be creating a separate grouping for gasoline station. Will that have categories or subcategories? Gasoline station, gasoline with convenience store?
That's a good question.
What direction are we looking at?
Yeah, that's a good question, um. I would think.
Most gas stations have a convenience.
Well, they have something available, but there's a little bit and there's.
Yeah.
Cause most of what we have right now, not most, a lot, are conversions from existing. Sometimes they've taken service bays and made that into the convenience store part. But anything new is gonna be designed in such a way. I just want, I'm just wondering what your thinking might be about how that'll be grouped. Subcategory, just one major category and then that's like a sub of, might have to do with how many pumps they have, you know?
I guess, do you have particular concerns about how the sites function if they have a large convenience store versus maybe a small convenience store?
Just that, is there enough pedestrian traffic? If it's bigger, you have pedestrians who aren't coming from a vehicle. They're just entering as a pedestrian to it. So I didn't know what site standards there might be for that.
There's also the issue, some of these are starting to become regular grocery stores as opposed to a true convenience store. Now, is that, is there a definition that might address that? Or is that an issue where you can put limitations on it? I mean, somehow I don't like the idea of a gas station suddenly becoming the, the biggest grocery store around.
So I, I would still say that the, those uses can be viewed as separately. So obviously the use needs to be permitted in the zone. So if a groce, you know, the grocery store would need to be permitted use that is then combined with the gas station use. And then also our parking standards do account for, you know, the square footage of the inside. For grocery purposes, you would take that parking count, for example, and need to provide a number of off-street parking for the grocery store aspect as well as the gas pumps and gas station use as well.
So you think it's accommodated already?
I would think.
Okay.
It, it would start to be addressed in what percentage square footage is a gas station? What is almost an accessory use?
But I think if there's one thing, so it sounds like, um, chairperson, you have, you wanted to see that maybe the convenient, gases that have convenience stores in them have extra pedestrian pathways to get to the front door.
Something like that, uh, sidewalk in front of it that it has to have.
Yep, we can, we can definitely make sure we add something specific there.
Yeah.
There's a, there's another one that I see when I'm traveling too, and that's like your Sheetz gas stations, which are now Michigan.
Yep.
So not only do you have the convenience store and the gas station, but you have outdoor seating and also not too bad food that you can order from the places. So there is basically small restaurants that are built inside of these as well. I mean, it's walk-up. Order and go.
All right, um, anything else here on this page?
I don't think so.
Nothing on this page, but some from here.
Okay.
I'm gonna hop all the way back to ADUs for a minute, um, accessory dwellings. Um, I think some of the most interesting stuff that's happening in, in so housing right now is like prefab ADUs. And I wanna make sure that there isn't stuff in here that prohibits that and I'd love to ex- explicitly permit it because with building costs, I think prefab ADUs, when they can be made architecturally compatible, um, are a really cool option here. Um, there's great manufacturers in Michigan even, so there's local resources for that.
I'm not sure that we're, um, prohibiting the hat.
I don't think we're prohibiting prefab or kind of a modular ADU.
Yeah, we just have to look at the setback requirements and things like that. I mean, it would be treated just like an accessory, any other accessory structure.
It's gotta be architecturally compatible with the primary dwelling, so it's, I mean, if there's, I would think if there's, let's say, if there's siding on the primary dwelling, it should probably be sided. If the primary dwelling is brick, you know, perhaps it's a brick or.
Not brick prefabs.
Yeah, but a, a veneer maybe, um, you could add to it. Um, I mean, if you think that that's overly burdensome though, we could revisit taking that standard out. If you think it's.
I, I think, um, as much as we could, um, I think the, I'm trying to remember where the standards I saw for architecturally compatible were, two of four things, but that, that was in another section in here, I think. Um, finishes, siding, um, maybe if it could have one of the four things instead of two of the four things, um, to make prefabs more possible.
I think we do go through that.
Sorry, I forget which section.
I forgot, I honestly forgot as well, so. Um. That might have been in the site standards, design standards for. That might have been in the site standards, design standards for I'm, I'm looking here. Maybe we didn't use architecturally compatible. I'm sorry, we can, maybe we have a little hit these when we get to the site standards.
Would that be possible, have that something that could come to the planning commission? If, if there's a major
Compatibility, yeah, we could say that if, if the zoning, so if the zoning administrator perhaps denies the ADU because the zoning administrator does not believe it architecturally compatible, the person could appeal it to the PC, and the PC could decide on it?
Well, at least it's an outlet anyway. I like the idea of compatibility.
Yeah.
That's why you want never, you know, trying
I see there, there's a big problem with that, because I would not wanna be creating some valid judgment on my part as a zoning administrator, as to what's
Someone's gonna have to, if it's, if there's a requirement for compatibility, someone's gotta
Yeah.
I don't
Would we rather just create a set of acceptable
You have to.
siding materials for the ADU?
So there, there is in the riverfront mixed-use zone, there's, um, there's a list.
Reference that maybe, but you have, if, if you have a compatibility requirement, you have to have some way for it to be judged at some point.
I also feel like with the commencement of existing housing stock, or saying architectural compatibility for more modern structures might just be a not 'cause the more, more modern structure might be more architecturally desirable.
And it may contain more sustainable building materials as well. So, if we wanna just get rid of the architecturally compatible altogether, we could, but I
I don't
I think there's also a, part of PC wants that as well.
Yeah, I think you need something.
I would think if you have a number of those items, and you can check them off.
So the riverfront mixed-use area, for example, the design standards are, you have to have change in color, change in material, material, uh, I gotta make sure, yeah, one of, design standard, building facades facing primary side streets shall incorporate, at a minimum, three of the following, our, uh, change in color, change in material, material modal of, or pattern, a system of horizontal and vertical scaling elements such as belt courses, string courses, et cetera, expression of the structural system or infill panels, articulation of windows and doors.
And I think we provide that, so I think what you're referring to, Commissioner, is the architectural scaling standards that we have in section five point one that was in your draft provided to you. So I think that's what you're referring to, and we, it's, we, we call it those same exact things.
Yeah.
But that, that's only right now for the mixed-use zoning districts, that would not apply to ADUs in a residential district. We could replicate that same list for ADUs in a residential district, if you think that that would be helpful.
I think you need some idea of what you're referring to, and you said compatibility in the residential area.
We can add that. Alright, anything else on Article Four, before we move to Five, which is going to be pretty hefty? I don't know if you wanna allow people to
Wanna take a break?
Take a, get some food or
I mean, I think people can come and go, isn't it?
Alright, let's go.
Okay, well, keep going.
There are also snacks over there, if anybody is interested. All of you and public, please, 'cause I wasn't trying to take anything home.
You choose chips too quietly.
Sam's Club special.
Alright, Article Five now, so these are your site standards. So these are the type of standards, um, that apply to the site improvements on a property. So these are the kinds of things that, you know, the zoning administrator or the planning commission will look for when you oversee site plan review. They, um, they entail things like parking, lighting, landscaping. And one of the purposes on why we regulate for these are that we wanna create a consistent site design for the broad land use types, and we do that overall in this new language. We try to classify kind of instances that are, um, you know, generally, um, try to codify some consistency between the residential, commercial, and industrial land use types. And again, we move standards that were embedded in definitions and districts into the site standard section, so you can see them all together at one time. So throughout our revisions here, um, you know, we've, we've, we all understand here that almost all development here in the city is redevelopment. So we wanna make sure that these standards are flexible and able to be reduced or waived at times. And in that, in those instances, the planning commission is the approval authority for that. Uh, we don't wanna allow the zoning administrator to be in charge of waiving something or modifying a standard. That should be you, as you review, um, the site as a whole, and ensure that, you know, the, the site is still keeping with health and safety standards, as well as, um, meeting the intent of the zoning ordinance overall. Again, here's the, the key, I'll just address these things as I go. So off-street parking, we'll start here. So single-family through four-unit housing, quadplexes, uh, may provide their parking on a driveway or parking strip leading to the side or rear yard, as long as that driveway does not exceed twenty-two feet in width. So we don't wanna allow parking, you know, in the middle of a yard, in front of a house, that looks bad, that's visual clutter, that brings down the appearance of a neighborhood. But we also wanna be sensible to allowing for some missing middle housing types in neighborhoods. And I think, and, and this is something that the Michigan Association, Association of Plannings zoning reform toolkit documents, is the fact that a lot of communities say, we wanna allow missing middle housing, we wanna allow triplexes and fourplexes in neighborhoods. But they still require a engineered parking lot to be built as part of that, which is not possible on a smaller site, and not feasible for somebody to have to go through engineering and, um, all of the costs associated with that, to just provide a three-unit triplex in a neighborhood. So in doing so, we've, we've decided, let's allow single-family through quadplexes to have to meet the same type of parking standards, and that can be on a driveway. It doesn't need to be in a formal parking lot that has striped spaces and maneuvering width. So really, what you could see is a fourplex or quadplex having, you know, a situation like this, where perhaps a resident parks on the street, and a couple cars park on the driveway. So that was one little carve-out we did, because it, again, it's supported by some of our professional organizations that one of the biggest things you can do to kill these small-scale increases in a neighborhood is just require huge parking lots. That just defeats the whole purpose of, um, walkability in a neighborhood as well. So, um, any thoughts here?
How does that comport with the requirement of off-street park, no, street parking? I mean, do we need to do something there?
I think the city would, and, and to council members, Osh Tosh's, uh, comment, I think you, you do wanna get some consistency and some sort of leniency for on-street parking. If you are truly going to wanna make these small-scale, what we call gentle density, or missing middle increases in some of your neighborhoods, you want to make sure street parking is permitted, because street parking, there's, there's a lot of studies that show that street parking actually makes your neighborhood safer as well. It decreases the speeds at which cars travel through a street. And a lot of our right-ofways are actually underutilized, a lot of them are too wide for really their true purpose anymore, for a twenty mile an hour road. And I think you're making best use of your infrastructure by permitting street parking.
Which is fine, is there gonna be a recommendation to council that that be done, or something be addressed?
I think that, I think that is going to be on perhaps everyone's to-do list for post-ordinance adoption activity. Does that make sense?
Yeah, except that if we put in the regulation in the zoning ordinance, then it really needs to be addressed before we do that, right?
Which, there is no regulation in the zoning ordinance that you, you're required to provide parking on a street, it's just an option. And it's something that we considered when creating these ordinances, to allow for the flexibility for one-to-four unit housing structures, um, we, we had it in mind that sometimes the parking demand will be met on the street, and not just in an off-street parking lot, so, um.
If we have that, yeah. If we have that in mind, we should figure out a way to make it so.
At least have the recommendation that, don't do this, don't allow it, or else you have to change the parking on the street.
Well, and generally, the zoning ordinance does not regulate on-street parking, because it's, that's
Oh, I understand, but that has to be a little change, it's a different ordinance. But you're asking for, you're, you're, you're putting in here that it can be done, but for the purpose of the building, the construction.
As, as a
Just if, if the city keeps that ordinance in place.
I would say the, I would say nothing is endorsing on-street parking here, it's just, 'cause we are, we're still requiring parking to take place on, for these triplexes or fourplexes on the driveway. So, so the zoning administrator, or the planning commission, whoever the review authority is for that case, will be able to review the driveway and ensure that for, you know, three cars or four cars, whatever the requirement is for that specific site, has that driveway size to fit those. It's just as a stopgap, extra relief for the building if, let's say, somebody has two, two cars per, per one of the dwellings, and someone wants to frequently park on the street, that's something maybe the city should get, get in order, so. Does that make sense? We're not requiring it to take place on the street. We put in some reduction strategies for parking, so right now, um, only the rear-front mixed-use district has some of these reduction strategies. We wanna allow for reduction strategies across the board throughout the city, so not just in the riverfront mixed-use district, but planning commission could approve a parking reduction by proof of a parking study or shared parking with another site, in a, let's say, in a B district, a B-two district, a B-one district. Also, the planning commissioner, zoning administrator could approve reduction of parking if it's in the International Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual, or the Urban Land Institute's Shared Parking Guide. If there's deferred parking provided, so deferred parking is what we'd like to say in a lot of other ordinances, land bank parking, it's where you, you promise you will build, you'll sign an affidavit, and you'll actually put it in the, in a, in a, as a deed restriction, that you will promise to provide parking on, you know, on a bigger parking lot, if the need arises. And so that's what deferred parking means. Uh, we're, we're allowing reductions by increased bicycle parking, and by proximity to parking lot, uh, public parking lots. So throughout, just throughout the general parking ordinance, we're just, we're allowing a little bit more reduction ability, so that, um, you know, we're not, we're not compelling huge parking lots to be built, be built. We're, you know, you're starting small, or you're starting perhaps at what the market is dictating, and building the parking lot accordingly. And then in the mixed-use zoning districts, the base minimum parking requirement will be automatically halved. So if the or, if the ordinance requires, let's say, ten spaces for a convenience store, that becomes five spaces for a convenience store in the mixed-use district. That's, these are areas that are close to downtown, that land is expensive, land is valued high, and parking is quite frank, huge parking lots are quite frankly, an inefficient use of land, when it's so much bigger than what the market is dictating. So you wanna have less parking in your, in your mixed-use districts, because you wanna make sure those are areas that are used for the highest and best possible use, um, as well as making sure pedestrians are accounted for as well.
Just a question, you have two restaurants next to each other with a big clientele, how are you gonna accommodate that parking?
I mean, perhaps there's a public parking lot nearby, street parking is allowed.
That's an assumption, though, what happens if it isn't?
Then some guests might have to circle around the lot and leave and not eat at the park, at the restaurant. I think that that's a private property owner's decision to build a bigger parking lot if they want, and if they can demonstrate that there's perhaps a significant need to build a big parking lot for their use. But I don't think it's this, we took the route that it's not the city's job to compel a huge parking lot, if somebody doesn't wanna build a huge parking lot. Does that make sense?
It does, I'm just
Yeah.
looking at the practicality of the situation, we're, at times, we have problems with parking in the downtown area, the old town area right now, I mean, there's, there's periods when you have a lot of people, and they can't find parking. I, I mean, if you're
And if, if a restaurant did come and they wanted to build a fifty-spot parking lot, we wouldn't stop them. This is the minimum of what they have to, and they can build more, if they feel the market demands it.
But there is also possibility of more than one-story parking, is that, you know, something you can consolidate?
Parking deck?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so parking decks are provided for in the use standards. Some, a private property owner, if they wanted, and say, you know, I can make money on park because of parking cars, they can build a parking deck. And then perhaps there's a shared parking agreement, or perhaps that parking deck has a, has an agreement with the city in that they're providing public parking, so parking for various uses in a, on a corridor, let's say. Somebody could get reduced parking because they are located, that restaurant that's located near that parking deck would have the ability to obtain, uh, reduced parking. So, um, we also are not requiring parking at all for non-residential, non-residential uses, and the conversion of upper-story uses, upper-story residential units in the downtown and mixed-use districts. So we've seen a lot of, there's a lot of case studies on the fact that, um, you're not going to get your upper stories in your downtown converted into residential uses if you're requiring parking. You want those converted into viable residences for people. And parking is just an extra cost for that developer, and an extra hurdle for that developer. So you wanna make sure that, one, you're providing residences for people that need housing, but two, you're eliminating that hurdle for the developer as well, to finish off those upper stories and make residences out of them.
That makes sense, but I, have you been in Chicago or any big city where they allow that, and don't have parking? It's a disaster.
Well, I think people don't
Not a big city yet, but
May we have those problems?
Well, I, well, I, yes and no, I don't want those parking problems, but I just, I don't know, I'm a little nervous, but I, I like the idea of absolutely, but I think somehow it seems like there's gotta be something that you can do to make sure that we don't have a street problem after that.
And these are very good questions, these are policy questions I think the city's gotta grapple with, is, you know, what do, do you, do you start with allowing a lot of, not a huge, uh, parking requirement, and allow kind of the market and the developer and the builder to kind of dictate that themselves? Or do you start by dictating the parking for the developer? And I think, um, those are those tough decisions that the planning commission has to make in their review of a zoning ordinance.
I think we have, have overabundance of parking.
I think there's a parking study as well.
Temporarily. No, I guess, let me rephrase that. The site plans that we receive, they provide almost an overabundance of parking, as opposed to limiting the amount of parking. Most of the site plans that we received have more parking than they need.
And that's all true for new development, I'm talking about redeveloping, you know, we wanna see those upper floors, et cetera, et cetera. But a second national bank building, is that not gonna have any parking?
So
I mean, that's a lot of people.
That, that's gonna be a decision, that's gonna be an economic decision by the residents, they're gonna have to decide, well, you know, okay, where am I gonna park my vehicle if I, if I live here? You know, so there's, there's kind of a So there's, there's kind of a economic balance there with the developer and the, and the, and the residents or, or the tenants. I mean, that's, that's something that they're going to have to, to work through.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Bill?
He responds.
Okay. Yeah, um, this is something that we've talked about before and we've actually passed policy to alleviate parking even up to a hundred percent if there's allowable on the street. The planning commission took that position, I think, a couple of years ago.
Yes.
We've talked about even doing like malt pleasant is an example, a small town, it's just, there is no parking requirement.
They have no parking requirement at all.
Relieves the burden off the developer. And if we're going to grow, and honestly, I would love to see this before I move, move on to, um, you know, somewhere else where I'll spend the rest of my time in my life. But I'd like to see where we get to a point where we start to think about, like even in Midland, when they did their downtown development in the city of Midland, tiny Midland, they have, um, parking under the street. So we need to start working with our developers who come into the city and we need to talk to them about that because they're always like, well, that's too expensive. Well, I'm sorry, but we have to think about that. This is a city. So kind of going with what you're saying, Second National Bank, we're going to have to, they're going to have to think about that. Where are we going to put the parking? And we kind of had that solved before, but yeah.
They had an agreement with the county.
Yeah, whether we'll have that agreement or not this time, we don't know. I mean, that's going to be a, that'll be a discussion, that'll be.
It would really be a discussion between the developer and their tenants, you know? He's got to figure out how you're going to attract tenants to your building. And if you don't have parking, then maybe some of them aren't going to come to there.
And parking garages can also offer security too. So anyways, thanks. Yeah.
Brenda, go ahead.
Is this not a work in progress or is this a science seal delivered on yours?
That's what we're, that's what we're shooting for is to.
So it's a science thing?
Yeah.
Uh, when you talk about Second National Bank, when they came to us the first time and talked about those apartments, they had allowed area for parking, so they covered themselves. Same thing with the Bancroft. The Bancroft, since opening, has made some parking spaces. In the beginning, I was trying to figure out where everybody was going to be too. I agree. I think that when we put a minimum on it and then they can build from there. Most businesses are going to want to build anyways if they've got the space and the money. If not, I do it. Trying to find a parking spot close to the farmer's market, I ride around the block two or three times. So, um, so this is not a work in progress. Can this be altered? Once we do it, that's what I'm asking. Does this, is this saying, no, we're not going to look at this ever, ever again. This is it.
Well, sure, it can always be altered.
So it's a work in progress for me.
Yeah, except that we're trying to pass the zoning ordinance.
I think, I, I think it's a healthy practice, uh, for a planning commission to annually review what's working, what's not working with the zoning ordinance and perhaps create a, uh, a, uh, a priorities list for future amendments.
Anyone here?
I have a more generalized question. I'll, I'll get to you, Rachel. In the specific schedule of the parking requirements for any number of different businesses here, are these developed in general on kind of a best practices thing? I'm sure some of this transfers from our existing zoning. But how, does it compare with, uh, cities of similar size and density for, say, what we want a funeral home to have?
Yeah, we, we did look at this from a best practice standpoint. We, a lot of times, a lot of zoning ordinances came, a lot of zoning ordinances used a parking count from another zone, another community zoning ordinance. And that's the whole, just for a little bit of background of how parking counts became a thing, they were often misused in the fifty, sixty, seventies in, in zoning ordinance regulations. They were often, a lot of times, somebody took something from a suburb who took something from a, from a rural community and suddenly everyone is using these, these one per every twelve-hundred square foot, which is not really based on the context of the community at all. I, I'd like to say we did reduce a lot of the numbers, the one per, you know, five-hundred square foot. You know, we perhaps made one per thousand square foot because you are a city, you have air, you have businesses next to other businesses, next to a public parking lot. And perhaps your parking count is not the same as, let's say, um, the parking count for Farmington Hills, Michigan. So I, we did look at this from a standpoint of we did shrink a lot of the minimum requirements on a lot of your use categories because it looked like a lot of your use categories had a pretty large number. So, yeah, that's kind of our, the way we did the, a lot of the parking counts.
Rachel.
We have almost the same question. Um, my question was, um, the source of the wonderfully extensive, uh, parking requirements, minimum spaces in that table that begins on five eight. Which it sounds like you have started to answer, but with a follow-up of, is there anywhere else we can either, cut land, the, cut a requirement at all from a particular land use because we just don't need to regulate that particular thing? Roll it up into something else, for example? Like if a funeral home is very similar to X use, could we make that a shared category?
Yeah, that's.
And where else could we drop? I'm all for dropping parking requirements wherever we can. If there's anywhere else, we could decrease them.
We can see about bundling some together, um.
It's very thorough.
We did, I think we did regulate a lot of different instances in this section.
Perhaps that's something we can come back to.
Yeah, perhaps that's something we can come back to with a more consolidated chart.
Thanks.
I do want to point out too, so it's been mentioned a couple of times throughout this discussion about somebody being able to provide, you know, as much parking as they want. We do right now have a maximum parking requirement as well, which is a hundred twenty percent of the minimum. However, the applicant can get that waived by the planning commission if they come to you and say, okay, we have, we have, um, the parking requirement is, is a hundred twenty spaces, so our maximum would be a hundred twenty, would be a hundred twenty spaces. But we know that because we have, um, we're offering a lot of three-bedroom units that we want to provide a hundred fifty spaces. Can we get that waived? And planning commission would review that and perhaps allow the hundred fifty spaces, which is over the hundred twenty percent maximum. So we do have a maximum requirement, which means generally if someone wants to just build out a site plan, they're not allowed to just build infinite number of parking spaces. They do have that cap that they hit as well, the minimum and maximum. So they're really getting a sweet spot there. But there is the ability for planning commission to allow them to exceed the maximum.
If I may? Under ten, section ten on page five eight, you do have occupancy defined.
Yep.
Then under bed and breakfast, for example, you use occupancy, but you use the word unit. Um, and that to me seems inconsistent because occupancy would be the whole dwelling normally. But a bed and breakfast, it sounds like you're talking about whichever, like a bedroom that they use. But that, that doesn't make sense. And then if you go further down to dwelling unit of a senior housing or senior housing independent, you're now talking dwelling units. Well, is the dwelling unit the individual bedroom or is it the, you know, those, I have a real problem with, what do those mean? And what, and also, if you're senior housing, uh, if you're really talking about an occupancy unit, that's fine, but then when you go to the boarding house or group residence, you're talking about bedrooms. There's at least three, if not four, different terms that are not consistent with each other when you're talking about.
Got it. Yeah, so we could, for boarding house, perhaps we could say, I think, I think we should define occupancy unit. So we use occupancy unit for hotels as well, so that would be the room that the guest is staying in. And, and we use that for bed and breakfast as well. So bed and breakfast in hotels both use occupancy unit. We could use occupancy unit for boarding house or group residence as well.
Yeah, you just, you need to get this consistent with your definitions.
Yeah.
That work for each one of these. And, yeah, even when you're talking about a bedroom, boarding house might have more than one person in a bedroom.
Mm-hmm.
And also.
Well, I think building code would, could perhaps, would perhaps cap the number of people in a, what's called a sleeping room by building code. So, you know, you, you wouldn't have, let's say, three people staying in a boarding house of a small, of a small room.
Isn't what that owner wants to get money out of. You know, if it's not defined, it, you know, you don't know.
Is a dwelling unit here like an apartment in the case of independent teen housing?
Yep, so a dwelling unit would be an apartment of a senior dependent housing unit, a senior independent unit and any kind of multi-unit apartment building.
But is that defined someplace that you could?
Dwelling unit will be defined somewhere. Yep, it'll be a place that has a cooking facility, so a kitchen, a bathroom and a bedroom or living area. Yep. This is what we would define dwelling unit as.
So just as long as these are, have definitions and are clearly referenced someplace that.
I think occupancy unit definite, definitely needs to be defined, so that's definitely a good note that we appreciate. So, right, this is mostly discussion so far on parking has been on just kind of minimum number, maximum number reductions. Anything else on this topic as we move to kind of the next parking topic? Okay. So, yep, we updated kind of the requirements in the chart as you've just, uh, observed and we can definitely look at maybe consolidating some of these so that there's just not as many. We also updated some of the stacking chart requirements. So for drive-through stacking, um, we, we, we kind of revised the drive-through restaurants and the car washes, uh, for the most part. So, um, just providing for enough staff stacking before the ordering box, as well as providing enough stacking for, before the, um, automatic service, uh, car wash service entrance. We also provide some design requirements for the stacking and queuing as well. So, um, with that is, uh, you know, some landscaping plannings we're requiring. We require a bypass lane. We require, um, yeah, just some of those drive-through lanes, uh, requirements as well. Just so that you're, when a drive-through is being developed, that there's truly enough space for it and that, you know, you're not just creating a logjam for everyone involved.
I did have back on page five twelve, you have a prison detention facility. You say one space for every three blocks. Are you referring to the prison block? What are you referring to?
I think that's, that's current language that I think.
Current language.
But what does it mean?
I know.
You know, there's, city blocks is very different.
Yeah, I know. We will look at that.
Typically refers to the, the staffing and visitors.
Yeah, but that's not, yeah, clearly this is something different. So I, again, it just needs to be clarified.
Well, I mean, so there's a standard for, um, the cell block and so you got to have parking for visitors as well as the administration. So I mean, that's, that was the measure that was used.
Well, I'm just saying the block is undefined, so you don't know how it references, you know? So anyway, just a thought.
So we're not requiring at this point, at this point in time, maybe at, at a future date, you might want to require it as a city, but we're not requiring that a parking lot provide electric vehicle parking spaces. Um, but we are creating standards that in the event, um, someone wants to build electric vehicle spaces, that there are some standards on what that looks like and how those, um, you know, how those are constructed. Which entails some lighting, some signage standards, um, ADA accessibility standards, voltage, signage, curbing requirements, you know, equipment mounting requirements and whatnot. We add additional requirements for pedestrian accommodations throughout the parking lot. We added requirements for bicycle parking facilities. So right now you have bicycle parking facilities requirements in your RMU district. But now we want to make sure we are accommodating for bicycle parking everywhere, not just your RMU. You have a lot of neighborhoods where people should have the ability to bike to a business and be able to, you know, put their bike on a rack, um, for their, for their shopping or whatnot. Um, and that came out of your master plan as well. We also are giving planning commission the ability to modify or waive the unloading and loading requirements. Nowadays, a lot of unloading and loading takes place in a, in a two-axle van or a two-axle, uh, box truck rather than a huge semi. So, um, we are allowing you to waive the big loading space requirement. If the, let's say, the applicant demonstrates that, you know, we don't have a lot of shipments, we don't have a lot of merchandise that's coming in and out. We're, we're never going to use a semi-truck, so we don't need a semi-truck space. Anything else on off-street parking and loading?
Who's going to put all this equipment up? When you talk about a bike rack, who's doing this? The city?
The property owner as part of their development.
Okay.
Yep, so it would be on their private lot. Anything else here? Move on?
Just, it probably, it may not be right, but the, the idea of having bike, uh, bicycle lanes is the city's issue, not the builders. But is there any requirement for, you have bike racks requirements, parking requirements. What about access across their property? Is that, is there something covering that? So, you know, it doesn't really good to have parking space for bikes that they really can't access. I, I just, I don't know if that's something that you think we should address or not.
I mean, technically, I think most bicyclists would get off their bike and walk their bike across probably the public sidewalk and into the site rather than just ride it into the site. Obviously, people have different, uh, thresholds of safety of bicycling as they bicycle. Maybe some of them will maybe hit a jump as they enter the site as well. Use the curb like I used to do when I was a kid and get some air. But, um, the, I think, I think for the most part, that would probably be a little bit of, in my opinion, a little bit of over-regulating if we require, you know, perhaps a bike lane within a site. We are provide, we are requiring at times, you know, pedestrian, you know, either hatched, uh, crosswalk areas within a site.
Well, that's reasonable.
So maybe they, a bicyclist would use that as they.
Be adequate.
Yep.
Okay, so at least there's something addressing.
Yeah.
Just to comment on that too, because we built that into, we built it in some of our transportation stuff recently with redoing streets. So like every time if we do a street, we're going to add a bike lane.
Yeah, you should, the city should, I think, adopt a complete streets policy, right? Where you, yeah, every time.
Yeah, and the other thing I was going to bring up too, we kind of went by it a little bit when we were talking about the parking pieces of the city. The transportation study, I just had it up again, reading it as part of the master plan, which is the reason why we're doing all of our rezoning, really kind of said we had adequate parking.
Yep.
The, it, it, when you look at the percentages of parking during the day and people that are parked there, it's like ten percent, seven percent. The only places that were saturated is Old Town, actually Old Town, and the parking ramps that are down there. Yeah, that's where you're reaching like eighty-some percent occupancy during the day. Downtown will change as the diamonds build, so we'll see increase there. But as it stands right now, we have.
The parking study demonstrated.
Parking lots, private and public. So, yeah. Parking lots, private and public. So, yeah, I wanna make sure we got that.
Yep.
Yep.
Uh, so let's move on to signs. Uh, so we go over, um, the start of the sign chapter, um, has some intent statement, has this, has, has some purpose statements, and then it has, uh, applicability requirements. So we define the instances in which the sign ordinance and sign permitting apply. So at this point, the sign ordinance is regulating all signs visible from a road, public park, or residential example property. Um, and then all, um, in, in the signs as regulated in this, in this section are then subject to a permit as well, um, which is the process that they will go through with the city's billing department, um, to obtain permission to, um, obtain the sign. Uh, we also listed signs that are exempted from the sign ordinances regulations. So those are things, those are signs like signs, uh, put up by a public entity, the city, um, traffic control signs, um, that are regulated by the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Um, directional signs within the site that don't exceed a certain number of, uh, square feet and a certain height. So directional signs not exceeding four feet in height and three square feet in area, um, that are within the site are not subject to sign permits or the regulations. Um, utility authorities, they are not subject to sign, sign ordinance or the permit requirements. Um, and window signs not exceeding twenty-five percent of any window pane. Um, we also have a number of prohibited signs. Um, so, um, signs that obstruct a motorist's view, um, signs that, um, are cons, may be construed as a traffic control device, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we worked on content neutrality, so we eliminated at times where a sign, um, you know, where a sign said something about product advertisement or endorsement or real estate signs or for-sale signs or political signs. So things like those we, we eliminated because you're not allowed to, you know, create a separate class for such anymore based on, uh, the Supreme Court. Uh, and then we're, we're moving into the direction that billboards will, will only be permitted in the industrial zoning districts. So, um, yep.
I'm gonna ask the most obvious question there. Is there a grandfathering ability?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So non-conforming signs are still going to exist and be regulated. Um, there are some, you know, they can lose their grandfather status if they become, uh, structurally unsafe or, or abandoned. Um, are be, you know, deemed a health and safety threat by the building inspector if they're not, you know, kept in good shape. Um, so there are, there are standards around non-conforming signs that do, could end their life as non-conforming grandfathered signs. But that being said, I think you're going to have some billboards in the city that will become grandfathered in under this ordinance. Yep.
Um, there's some lighting illumination standards too.
Yep.
That's, the, such lights must be shielded so that they illuminate, illuminate only the surface of the sign. That's good, but it doesn't say if it's downward or upwards.
Mm-hmm.
It's a question of sign, of light pollution.
Do you wanna, do you wanna, yeah, I know some goosenecks lights that, you know, most of them go downward, but I know some of them kinda do an uplighting. I mean, we can prohibit that if you'd like and make them downward only.
We have enough sky illumination as it is. You can't see anything. I mean, I'd, I'd rather have it at least down.
Yep. Okay. So make sure all signs, yeah.
Yeah, illumination shouldn't be sign pollution, sort of.
Yep. Yeah, we don't want signs contributing to light pollution.
The other thing on that too is, um, the business is not there anymore, but there was a dental shop on the one-way, and the illumination of that sign was so bright in the morning time that one time a bike actually passed, and I couldn't see the biker because the sign was blinding me as I went down there. And I, I'd like to revisit that because at the time, our illumination standards were, they were within their guidelines. And so, um, I, I understand the, uh, the digital signs are needed, but I think right when they're on the street, and that can be really, um, and I can think of another one too. There's a credit union on Wall, on Washington. It's pretty bright at night too, so.
There used to be one on Bay Road, just north of State, Davenport. It was really bad.
Yes.
Uh, they can blind drivers.
Yes.
And, and we need, I agree, we have to do something to prevent that.
So we do have some, so we do have, we no longer regulate by watts anymore, but we do regulate by lumens, which I think there can be, there's a, I think wa- watts and lumens can be calculated into a comparable, you know, measure. But right now, we're, we're suggesting a maximum of three thousand lumens of non-flashing white light. So three thousand lumens is generally seen as fairly acceptable to the human eye for a color standpoint. It's kind of right in between the yellow and the white color. So it's, um, generally seen a pretty well best practice, uh, for light color in that it's not too shockingly white light bright. It's more.
Lumens is not, doesn't deal with the color. It just deals with the amount. There is, there is color grades from daylight down to the yellow, uh, light. And lumens don't regulate that. So if you're trying to avoid that really bright white, which is daylight, that's the brightest, then, and I think you should because we have, that's, especially on these, the signs that, uh, electronic ones, you'll be having one color and suddenly they'll flash a brighter white light that'll blind you.
We can see about maybe regulating.
Actually, a comment on that too is, there was one sign I saw that it was so bright, you couldn't even tell the colors. It was just.
So I consulted with, with, with the sign companies today. Um, in fact, I'm, I'm suggesting maybe, uh, changing the, the ordinance. Um, most of the, for example, the electronic messaging boards now, um, have, they have the ability to, um, change during the day. They'll, you know, they'll be very bright during the daytime, and then they, uh, reduce the amount. So, for example, um, the Saginaw Township's zoning ordinance has a maximum brightness, um, of five thousand nits N I T S, which is candles per square meter. Um, I, in talking to, uh, one of the sign companies, they suggest that actually ten thousand nits is probably more appropriate on a sunny day, okay? But then they have the ability to, um, dim themselves after a certain period of time. So then it, it, it's not allowed, or, I'm sorry, a thousand nits then would be allowed, allowed after the sun went down. So it, it, it's a variable kind of a thing. Most of the newer signs are, are like that. And then, and then, so one of the suggestions also is that that messaging board have a dimmer control to produce the distant illumination change from a higher illumination level to a lower one, given the period of time of day from sunset to sunrise.
Is that a manual dimmer requirement or is that an?
Automatic.
Most of the newer ones have, it's automatic. They have a function on them.
Well, I think we need some standard on it, and maybe that's an answer.
Right. And so.
Have to require that all of them have some way to do that.
Correct. Yep. So I, I pulled Saginaw Township's language down, um, other than the fact that, that they have five thousand nets during the day, where, whereas the sign company said ten thousand is probably about where they need to be.
Yeah, but that's the sign company.
During a sunny day, yeah, it does need to be that bright. That's what they're saying.
Well, is, is the township having problems with people saying the five thousand is not enough?
No. I don't know. I didn't, I didn't check with them. But I, you know, I think.
I know they had problems for, for, for a long time, and that's maybe why they enacted that one.
Yeah, the, the signs are different these days than they used to be.
They're powerfully brighter. Um, and I, I love the idea of, um, us putting some guidance in here for pedestrian and traffic safety.
Yeah. Bikers too. I mean, all of them.
Can we also regulate headlights?
I'd like to.
I think that's beyond the true beauty area.
Yeah. Technology coming out with that.
That'd be nice. So I think, and I, and I, I'm sorry, I, for some reason I got Kelvin mixed up. Kelvin regulates color.
Yeah.
But, but lumens is brightness. Um, we can look at if three thousand is maybe too high, we can maybe lower that. Uh, we'll look at some best practices.
Depends on the time of day.
Yeah, we should be doing some of the other stuff that.
Yeah, yeah.
Bob is talking about, or at least look at what we might do there. It has to be regulated.
If it's, if it's a stationary light, yes, three thousand lumens is probably practical.
Mm-hmm. But as a.
But if it's an electronic sign that, um, varies during the daylight hours, then that could be higher.
I guess I don't have enough knowledge to say a three or five or.
I had to take a crash course today.
Nice.
Thank you.
It's helpful to be right immersed in the, uh, sign permitting and whatnot. You learn a lot. All right, um, I think that was good.
One more thing on signs. So like on the businesses and signs, like the size of the sign?
Oh, we, we, we're getting to that.
Okay, right. Okay.
Well, we're not, we don't have it expressed, but we do have a, a new slide that says.
Got you. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So, yeah, we, we, we did, we consolidated everything into the, the one section of the ordinance, whereas size was all dumped by district, which was kind of annoying, I think. Um, so you can hit me with any sign, sign, size questions now.
Well, I think for the most part, um, what I see sign size is fine. However, there is one business on the one-way. It just happens to be a cannabis shop. Um, it's very bright and very big, and I don't know how it got to be that big on the building. It's, without saying the business name, I think people know which one I'm talking about. Um, but other than that, I, I think that was what, where I clued into on this, um, was signage. Because I know the township did some things. I don't wanna compare the township to the city because we're, we're separate entities. But they even did too where the signs had to be a certain height and then a certain size for visibility. Um, but those are monument signs. Those are mounted pedestal. Yeah. But I think looking at the signs on the buildings is, is where I'm focused right now because of that one particular business. Yeah.
So right now, we regulate in the business districts, the B one and B two districts, uh, we, we, the maximum size is, is, uh, one point five square feet for each lineal feet of the building frontage up to two hundred square feet in B one. But that can grow up to three hundred fifty square feet in B two. Again, it's, and, and that would be if the, in B two with a three hundred fifty foot, square foot rule, that would, you would need at least that many feet of, of, um, lineal building frontage to even get to that number.
And that, those are all what we have in current zoning ordinance.
Yeah, you have a similar scale in the current zoning ordinance. So you're still, you're still regulating based on lineal feet of the building up to a certain maximum. And a lot of ordinance is do that, that way, just so that you have some, uh, proportionality of the sign on the building face. But you could, if you want, you could just adopt a, a broad wide sweeping square footage.
Well, even the three fifty, you're kinda looking at a thirty by ten.
That's huge.
That's three hundred square feet.
I, I think that's too big, Mike.
That's even fifty.
It's cute like ten, isn't it?
You would need at least that. You would need a millennial foot, frontage of the building of at least three hundred fifty.
So, so our sign size is based upon either the building facade or the frontage on, on property.
I like it.
And so it's, it's proportionate. It's not a one-size-fits-all.
And, and real quick on the facade, millennial feet, does that include all? You know, if you got a two-story building, but the first story is wider or?
No, 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 no. It's the, the width of the.
Entire width.
The width of the facade, not the area.
Well, I just, yeah. Sometimes you have projections. You might have, you know, a wall that's there but no part of the building, for example. So, you know, you add up.
Yeah, and it's cumulative too. So.
It's everything.
So, yeah, so if it's three hundred and fifty square feet, for example, that means for every sign that's on that piece of property.
Yeah. So, so actually, three hundred, or two hundred thirty-three millennial feet of building and greater, you'd be capped at two, at three hundred fifty square feet, based on that calculation. So a two hundred thirty-three lineal foot building or longer, you'd be able to have three hundred fifty square feet. And that's just the B two district. That's not the mixed-use district or the, uh, B one district. That's your most like automobile-heavy, you know, larger setback kind of zoning district anyways.
Could those be electronic?
The electronic could be, uh, approximately.
I, I wouldn't hate to see a three hundred.
So the electronic is, is a limited size as well. There's only a certain size you can get an electronic sign.
So the electronic portion could be, um.
Only up to fifty percent.
Fifty percent of that. So, uh, so maximum one hundred sixteen square feet could be electronic sign.
And I'm proposing that we limit it to twenty-four square feet.
I would be okay with that. I really would.
Which, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it's, I mean, it, it's distracting when you're driving. But yet, the, MDOT has, I crashed course again today. MDOT has done these studies about those electronic signs, and the motion and the changing of the copy does not distract a driver from, from that. In fact, it, it helps because you, you can visually see it real quick as opposed to ones that our ordinance says it, it can't change, um, more than, or it, 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 every thirty seconds it has to, it can change. And so that's almost more distracting 'cause people are watching it waiting for, you know, a different picture to come up, and then they get distracted from driving, whereas if it's flashing, you can see it. Not flashing from the standpoint of blinding you, but changing, I should say, changing.
And then the mixed-use districts, you're capped at the same one point five measure per lineal feet up to two hundred square foot max in any instance. So.
Any other sign questions?
And then, here's a little chart here. So you can kinda see what type of sign is permitted and what type of, uh, zoning district. So right now, um, the B, the business zoning districts kind of have the most flexibility because they're actually granted the freestanding pole signs. Um, whereas the freestanding pole signs are not allowed in any other district, although billboards are kind of that, of that nature, but they are only permitted in the industrial district. Um, wall signs can, are, are allowed, so the residential districts only allow wall and monument signs. But they're really, really small if you're a single family through a four fam, through a four-unit use. Once you're a, a, a larger multiple-unit residential use or a, or a non-residential use in the residential district, so like a place of worship, you could have a little bit larger signs than if you're a single-family residential house. Uh, so we did, we did do a little bit of, uh, a little bit of a carve-out there. That being said, yes, single-family to, single-family residential to fourplexes are only allowed three, maximum three square feet of sign area. So pretty much just a little plaque on a, on a wall if you wanna have a sign. Any questions on signage?
Yeah, I, I, maybe I misunderstood something you said about the maximum signs available or possible. But in industrial districts, it's up to seven hundred square feet? But in industrial districts, it's up to 700 square feet?
Yep.
So the current zoning ordinance is-
Yep, the current ordinance allows that.
Wow, now, that would allow a electronic one, half of that?
As it's written right now, yes.
That's why I'm suggesting we limit it to 24 square feet.
Twenty-four.
To how much?
Twenty-four square feet.
I don't think we want an electronic sign anywhere that's 350 feet. Yeah, well, you have billboards that are electronic signs.
Yeah, you have huge billboards that are electronic.
That's a monster.
It's probably that one on the top of the Wicks building.
Yeah. That's huge, that's just, I mean, from a business standpoint, it's worthless to viewers. Now, it's up high, which makes a big difference. Maybe if you let them be way up high, they can be that good, but certainly wouldn't want one lower. Billboards can be a lot lower.
Right now, we do have maximum height of billboards at 35 feet. So they are, they're not incredibly high, but they're rather-
I don't, I don't want to see a 350 square foot electronic sign at 35 feet or less.
That's a good consideration, yeah.
So I think that needs to be drastically reduced.
Alright. We do have some temporary signage regulations in here, some sign permit requirements and additional standards for sign variances. So if a sign is asking for a variance, they need to prove a little bit more than a, another version of a dimensional variance, like a setback variance perhaps. We can move on to landscaping if we're ready, we still have a little bit more to get through. Alright, so on landscaping, we have some scope and applicability requirements for the kind of development, for, that these requirements are only prompted when the site is undergoing a site plan review. So if a site does not require a site plan review, they are not, they do not need to provide, you know, a landscape plan complying with these standards. But if they are undergoing site plan review, they do. So we do have a clarification statement on the fact that redevelopment sites should be given flexibility. In that instance, we want to require a site's landscaping to be proportional to the amount of work being conducted on the site. That is, let's say there's a building expansion of a certain number of square footage. The zoning administrator and the planning commission would then determine that, you know, the entire site doesn't need to be, doesn't need to provide, you know, the street frontage landscaping, but just a portion that is, you know, proportionate to the building expansion needs to be provided. So let's say there's a 20% increase in building square footage. You would say, okay, let's, let's provide a 20% increase in the amount of frontage trees perhaps.
Does it matter where they would do that? I mean, would it be in front of the new development, it could be anyplace?
I think, that's a good question. I would think it would probably want to match the new development, just because that's the site, that's, that's the portion that's probably already being torn up and, you know, driven on by equipment. And then, you know, perhaps you plant the trees at the end to make that area look nice. But I think, I think there can be flexibility there.
There should be some way of either requiring it and then having exceptions for a reason. It just seems to me the better way to do it.
Yeah. And I'm just going to point out too, there are very broad exception and waiverability for the planning commission for landscaping. In that subsection O on page 550, 5 hyphen 50, planning commission can pretty much reduce the minimum requirements of the entire section. Whenever you find that, you know, the, the following findings are, are determined by the planning commission. So you do have some broad ability to waive or reduce landscaping standards in many instances throughout this section.
Right now, there's no requirement of where that landscaping would be, I'm just saying, put a requirement, and it could be reviewed.
Yeah.
You don't have, there's nothing to review, if they have all the choice.
Yeah, we can say that the proportional landscaping needs to be, you know, right in front of the-
Yeah, there's a reason.
Building, yeah. The, uh, so we, one thing we heard from the general public during our public input sessions was that we need to, we need to really zero in on having correct species, having species that are native to Michigan, that the region, and just require that in the ordinance. So we do have, we did fit in some native planting requirements. New tree plantings need to be at least 90% native. New shrubs need to be at least 50% native.
Is there a prohibition on, on invasive species?
So we've, we are referring to chapter 90, not 94, chapter, is it chapter 94 as well?
I don't remember the number.
The public nuisance chapter.
We're working on doing a corresponding update to the noxious weed ordinance. That would broaden it to prohibit a larger variety of species.
And we would add a few more trees, like tree of heaven and some of those really bad trees these days to that.
Buckform.
Yeah, yeah.
Just looked up the, in section six here, prohibited species, chapter 95, if I'm looking at a current one. Only bans cottonwood and box elder trees, and I would add to that list tree of heaven.
Yeah, they're- Yeah, Siberian elms and, you know, some of those, so I think there's-
Shrubs too.
Yeah, there's, I think there's a lot of trees and shrubs the city could add to that prohibited noxious weed ordinance list, yeah. The, we're also requiring a diversity of species type, just with obviously the way that the emerald ash borer and Dutch elm disease, you know, really wiped out huge portions of trees throughout the Midwest. We want to make sure that, you know, that's not happening as drastically anymore. So a species diversity would help in the case that we get the Asian longhorn beetle and the oaks are affected or whatnot. So we provided a lot of different requirements there in the, in the landscaping ordinance. We added a woody vegetation requirement for the zoning districts that require open space. So right now, we're, we're requiring, you know, a certain percentage of open space be provided on, let's say, a B1 property or a B2 property or an industrial property. Not the mixed-use districts, because that's, those are those downtown districts and the areas that are built out a lot more. But we're requiring, and you'll see that in the next meeting, but in the zoning district standards, there will be open space requirements for certain districts. And a certain percentage of that open space will need to be woody vegetation, so not just grass. Because grass really is not, grass is nice for stormwater management and drainage, but grass is, doesn't provide a benefit to nature and ecosystems, so. We also are providing street frontage landscaping requirements for new buildings or expansions of 10% or greater in gross floor area. So that means then they need to, the, the site would need to comply with a frontage greenbelt width, which can be waived by planning commission if it's in the mixed-use districts, because again, those are those areas that are built out and aren't going to have that space for greenbelt width. But they would also need to provide frontage and street trees to create a better street canopy. And they would need to provide a parking lot buffer, like a small screening planting of about three and a half foot high along the parking lot border. You've required that, I think, in your RMU district right now, and you've had a couple, I think there's a good example of one that was recently built, is it the Bancroft maybe that has a little bit of a parking lot buffer? So you would just see that on, on all of your sites now throughout the city, that little screening shrubbery adjacent to the parking lot. Any questions on the woody vegetation requirement or street frontage requirement? We're going over a lot, so feel free to stop.
This section is very thoughtful.
Good. Overall landscaping was something we heard a lot from, from the public feedback, so we just wanted to make sure we were thoughtful there. We're revising the parking lot landscaping requirements, so right now, the parking lot landscaping requirements for amount of trees and i, landscape islands are only prompted when you have a parking lot of 40 parking spaces or more. We've shrunk that down now to 20, so we've had that. So you will see more instances where the parking lot landscaping requirements are prompted. We've also provided amended just language on really, you know, the number of trees, the spacing apart. We're providing graphics. I do apologize for the graphics, a lot of the graphics we provided in the, provide text are actually work in progresses. We're, we're just making small amendments to certain aspects of those graphics, but those are the kind of graphics you'll see in your final product, just with the details more accurate. We're providing landscaping and screening requirements overall from conflicting land uses. So when one land use abuts the other at the property line, we crafted some pretty thorough screener requirements for those instances. Those are what we call the screening buffers, so we, we've actually created two classes of them. One is the minor screening buffer and one is the major screening buffer. And they'll look somewhat like this, a berm is not always going to be required in the major buffer, but sometimes you, we're allowing the flexibility for somebody to build a wall with those evergreens. So right now, we have a chart that specifies the kinds of screening buffers that are prompted when. And that, I would think that chart takes pretty much any development circumstance into consideration. So I hope that chart is, you know, I hope we're not missing any instances there, but we, we tried to just account for everything.
Is there any requirement to replace ones that die as often as they do?
So I think you could do that by two ways. So we are providing some landscaping maintenance requirement in subsection N on page 5 hyphen 50. Well, I think it's a reasonable interpretation too of the zoning administrator and the code enforcement officer to realize that if there's an approved site plan that has a screening buffer that states that their screening is done this way and in five years later, you see that there's now half the trees are dead, I think that's a reasonable violation to give someone. And, you know, compel compliance with that site plan.
So they'll be putting the trees up, so they'll be responsible to care for it.
Yep, yep, so, so the property owner is the responsible one to care for the tree, yeah. And if they aren't-
Landscaping, any of it.
Yeah, any, any landscaping, trees, shrubs. And if they aren't, then they are in violation of subsection N.
Did you keep the trees in the right-of-way the same? Nothing's changed there between the sidewalk and the street?
The, so we are allowing with DPW permission, somebody to meet, somebody to get, so if somebody can't provide that 10-foot strip of frontage landscaping with trees on their private property, they can apply to the city to meet that requirement by having street trees planted in the right-of-way strip.
Yeah, because that was the way it was written right now. You had to have permission to plant, permission to cut.
Yep, by DPW.
Okay.
So we're keeping consistent with that.
Alright.
So there could even be an instance though where somebody has a built-out site and it's in the mixed-use district and planning commission says, you know, we'll waive the requirement to provide that 10-foot greenbelt because your building's built right up to your sidewalk, you don't have room to provide 10 feet there. You know, go get permission by DPW to plant a couple of street trees. And it's possible that DPW might deny that request due to a utility line running under that area. And then you don't get anything, but at least the effort's been made. There's, there's, we're just trying to be flexible with development. And I don't want to make somebody, we don't want to make somebody tear down, you know, reduce their building, you know, tear down part of their building to provide that 10-foot there.
No, that actually came up one time when I was on the zoning board of appeals with Mary Freebed. We had to move closer to the street, we had, had to have a change for that. And it, even in that particular case, like you mentioned wires, you can always do ornamental tree like the hydrangea, something just for locals.
Or like a little dock, a little dogwood, drubin might be under the lines.
Yep, okay.
So we have some more additional site standard changes. So we modified some access management requirements, so driveway approaches, so kind of where the, where the driveway to the parking lot meets the street right-of-way, we provide some standards for those.
Out of order, sorry.
Oops. Yep, that would be, yeah, so I, I did these article five by the big stuff and now I'm going into the small stuff. So the smaller changes, so we're almost done here. The access management would actually be 5.7 on page 5 hyphen 53.
Thank you.
In a built-out city too, we want to allow for the ability for people to share access through like a cross-access, shared-access drive. So we did provide some standards there that say that that is allowed. And somebody doesn't need to provide a driveway curb cut if they get that access through someone else's property.
That raises a question, because I've dealt with it before where you have, are you going to require that they actually have like a license? A license or an easement?
Yep, yep, so the city would just check and make sure that the property owner has provided an easement that provides that access into perpetuity.
Good, because I, I've come across with it, hasn't been, and they had a battle over it, yeah.
So they should only get that flexibility if they've provided that to either the zoning administrator or the planning commission, whoever the review body is of the particular case. The trash enclosure, so right now your ordinance doesn't require, maybe in the RMU it does, but right now your ordinance, besides the RMU, doesn't require the dumpsters to be enclosed in a, in a screened enclosure. So right now, we're putting that language in that all dumpsters or recycling containers or bins, whatever they're using for their trash service, it needs to be enclosed in a container and organized neatly.
So all of them?
Yep, all, all development except for, all development requiring, all development of multiple-unit residential or non-residential. So we're not requiring it for a single-family house or even a duplex or even a fourplex. But for anything above that, multiple-unit residential or non-residential sites, you need a trash enclosure.
For new development.
And that, and that's for new development and that's for if you, if you are having outdoor trash storage. Now, some sites might do bins, it all, and I'm not super familiar with the ins and outs of Saginaw's trash pickup, but some communities have, allow even commercial sites to even have the rolling bins brought out to a curb. I don't know, is, is that allowed here?
Saying it doesn't have bins yet.
You don't do bins, okay. So everything is big dumpster pickup, I would assume, for commercial sites.
The reason why I bring this up is I've had two cases in the neighborhood where we had a business and a rental. And the rental unit overflowing all the time, mattresses and a lot of complaints from the neighbors because of course that doesn't look good with that. And then also the same situation happened with the business. So if they're enclosed, critters can't get in more or less, they can't be constraining it all over, that was an issue. The seagulls were, you know, taking it everywhere. And so that's why I was asking that question. So if it's new construction or a new business going in, I think it's very good that we have that, like other cities do.
Yeah.
And by enclosed, it's four-sided, not roofed.
Yep, yep.
Right.
So it's not going to stop-
Well, it's not going to stop the birds, but you know, you're going to have turkey buzzers come in or whatever.
There was a follow-up to that though, and this may not be properly included, but one of the problems with these units is people who do not, who shouldn't be dumping there will drop off the mattresses or they drop off-
That's true too, yeah.
To all the other degree. And suddenly, it's overflowing.
Yep.
Is there going to be a locking requirement or some way to at least keep others out?
We do say a lockable gate shall be installed.
Okay.
And, and it shall, and the gate shall be opaque too. So I, I mean, you can't provide, prevent every scenario from ever happening, but I think that's one thing that helps.
That will help.
I mean, at least there's something there.
What you say you're doing is for the newcomers. You got old comers.
Right, everybody else is there.
You got, you got old people with old establishments that's got mattresses and the same stuff. So, I mean, what are we going to do? Are we going in grandfathering in? Are we going in saying, hey, these are the new rules? You gotta do this. What are we doing?
That, that's a good question. For, right now, the interpretation of this ordinance would be that somebody that doesn't have an enclosure is indeed grandfathered in. They're not compelled to build one because of passage of this ordinance. However, if that's something, I mean, I would defer to maybe city attorney Lusk for that question. If we would want to do a phased-in approach, or even put something in your general code that is more compelling to allow, and require people to build in a dumpster enclosure after the fact of this ordinance's adoption. Right now, right now, we're just, a business that doesn't have one would not be compelled to build one, unless they're, they're rebuilding or going through redevelopment of their site.
I wonder if you could do something based upon comply, or that's the right word, on the history of the place. We've done that with other things. If this is a location that gets a ton of outside stuff, maybe we need to be able to require it. I, I, it's just, Amy, it's your problem.
There could, there could be nuisance language involved.
Right.
I mean, everybody's grandfathered in, but if there's a nuisance involved and they, I think that, that language is there that you have to build.
Yeah, that might be a way to do it.
I've seen one community I've worked in did that for landscaping. They said, you need, you know, after adoption of the ordinance, you have four years to, you know, put your street trees in. And they were required to do that, and I thought it was kind of strict, but they must have thought it was within the, I'd, I would defer to city attorney Lusk on these.
Certainly have a problem.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we can certainly discuss as we're, as we're putting the finishing touches on the zoning ordinance. My inclination is when every other standard is set up as a non-conforming is accepted.
Why this?
There's a difference. There is a difference here with dynamic situations.
Especially when we have other ordinance enforcement tools to use in the case of trash and abandoned property and things of that nature, and do currently use them, so it-
Yeah.
I'd like to see something myself.
I just want to know. I mean, we grandfathered in so much.
Yeah.
We gotta be, we gotta be careful about a lot of things that we're talking about right now. Because even with the landscaping, the signage, you're doing all of this grandfathering.
Yep.
But they may not be in compliance from the get-go.
Yeah.
And so now, we're saying, okay, you've been there, we're gonna let you do it. So, again, we gotta be cautious. You know, and I keep hearing you say, put it in writing, if it's not in writing. I mean, it's like telling us, but if I don't see it in black and white, it's not so.
Maybe we should, we could put language in that just specifies the instances in which a trash enclosure is required a little bit better. So we could say, I mean, it could, we could be something like, any change of use of, of a property, you're, you're required to build the trash enclosure.
Increase in use or something, I mean.
Yeah.
The more we can do to, the more we can do to prevent blight, the more we can do to prevent-
So you're talking about an enforcement issue that is getting to be very complicated. Because we have changes in uses all the time, but the change in use isn't necessarily a zoning violation. It's just a, another permitted use within that zone. And so all of a sudden, how do I know, you know, whether or not there was a change in use other than the license was granted and that information is getting, and then I would have to go over there and tell them, hey, you need to put in, you need to build a dumpster in there. And what if he doesn't have enough property?
And right now, as you, as your ordinance is, if you require it to be a full pickup, that property might not have the turning radius for that dumpster truck to get into the property to pick up the dumpster as well.
And I think, I think Attorney Lusk makes a good point in that we have other enforcement means where things get, you know, a little junky and, you know, you need to tell them to clean things up, so.
Yep. So maybe requiring for change of use is a bit harsh and perhaps a little bit burdensome on your business, businesses changing hands or a new business coming in.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just for new construction.
That's what this is written as.
Yep.
I just, this is last time, and that's not sure that our current enforcement is of any benefit, quite frankly, when it comes to these situations. I mean, I know we do some, but there's a lot out there that-
That we don't.
That we don't.
Right. Well, I, I think that, I mean, I appreciate your concern, but I think it's outside of the zoning ordinance either way.
Well, it doesn't have to be. You could make a requirement that it be done by everybody within a certain amount of time with the rights to exceptions. I mean, you could do different things.
Again, it goes back to enforcement. So if this is now a zoning enforcement, there's your enforcer right there doing all of them.
Well, what I was going to say is, you can have a requirement for those that have space, just simply say make the requirement they have to do in a certain time, and they can come if they don't have the space or they don't have accommodations, they could get an exception.
Well, and that's part of the problem. If, if you're looking at making this a penalty-
Not a penalty.
For an ordinance violation.
No, it's not a penalty. We're just saying this would be a requirement.
But if you don't, then it must have a penalty.
But it's not being universally applied then.
Currently, it wouldn't be triggered at all. We would have to purposely find them through the licensing process and target them and say, you have a change of use, so you now need to comply, or you will be in violation of the zoning ordinance.
All of this has, this has presumably penalties throughout. I mean, otherwise, why do you have it? So penalties aren't the issue.
It is, but when you adopt this standard, the day that this will be adopted, the zoning ordinance is the day that that goes into effect.
Yeah, we, we know.
Okay, so that's when the enforcement starts moving forward from there.
Of course. But that's why it'd be a phased-in. I mean, if it, it's up to the, I, I'm just thinking, there's got to be some way to try and address the problem we have with the ordinance that we already are addressing with new ones. What's, you know, you get someone who comes in and says, why would I have to do this if all these others out there don't?
But then you're talking about phasing, okay? So I got one business that has five years to do this, and then I have to keep a clock on, on that one. And, and, you know, it's just, it continues to, it would be a nightmare to follow.
It is a problem, I grant you that. It's going to be a problem either way.
I can see Bob's point. I mean, I got you on that one. That's, we've been down that path before trying to track things. We don't have enough staff. You have a dedicated person. That's what they're doing.
The question was not debatable. I was asked the question. Okay, we always talk about being transparent. Because see, the mouth will say anything but behavior will flip on itself. I just wanted to know, what's the backlash?
Yeah.
She says, always backlash is.
It's changeable.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, it could be something that if you don't think you're getting the proper trash management still in the city after a few years, and you want to change it, maybe that's your time to-
Planning commission makes a recommendation to council.
Up the requirements.
Yep, okay.
I do think that until you have a kind of a curbside pickup option, that's a really, it's a really harsh thing to require is that everybody retroactively comply with a dumpster pickup when you might not even have access to get a truck in.
Then good, leave it the way it is and see what happens.
Okay.
We provide some revisions to traffic visibility standards, so we're continuing to refer, and this is, sorry, this is section five point nine. I believe we go in relative sequence the rest of the way. So, section five point nine on page five hyphen fifty-four, or fifty-five. Right now, we're, we're still regulating street intersection visibility in the city code, chapter ninety-four, but for driveways. So when a private driveway intersects a public street now, we create some standards for that. So, that's a, you're not allowed to essentially build things that create an obstruction within thirty inches high to eight feet high within that traffic tri- traffic visibility triangle. We show a little drawing here. Let me see if I can move in. So this would be that triangle essentially. And actually, we're, again, we're, we're amending some of these drawings, so this would actually be a ten-foot requirement.
Because that's what the current zoning is.
Mm-hmm.
That is an interesting question. Is this retroactive too, or apply to-
No, this is, this is grandfathered as well. So all of the standards in zoning are things that a site's grandfathered in. And we don't have any kind of, you know, bring up to phasing unless you're redeveloping, unless you're going through site plan review because you're proposing an expansion, or a special land use, or, you know, planned year development, or something like that.
Does it apply to all residential?
This is, this is residential as well. So single-family residential, you can't put something in that triangle as well.
But if someone has a tree that's shorter?
A tree, so, so trees can be in that triangle as long as they are maintained and their branches are maintained.
Well, that's what I ask you.
At maturity up to-
Grandfathered in, if you've got trees.
Yeah, yeah, so a tree could be, yep. So you could have a pine tree in there, and if that pine tree's existing on the day this ordinance is adopted, you're not, no one's requiring that pine tree to get cut down.
I believe you'll find that there's already visibility standards for driveways in the city ordinance.
In ninety-four?
It's fifteen feet.
Yep, it's ten, ten.
Okay, so it's ten feet.
Ten, ten.
In the current ordinances, yeah.
Christine.
For driveways.
So we could actually just remove this whole section and just refer to those city ordinances. I guess, yeah.
Yeah, the difference is- The difference is the intersections. Our current zoning ordinance is sixty feet, and MDOT standard is twenty-five, and we're adopting MDOT standard of twenty-five.
Oh, for the twenty-five for the-
The intersections.
For intersections.
So, so you won't?
But I'm looking at-
You won't see in those fences that are on an angle.
But I'm looking at the driveway intersection.
No, that should be ten feet. That's what the current zoning is, like you said. Yeah, yeah, figure that out.
Sidewalks, we were, we're adding a sidewalk requirement that a sidewalk shall be provided. So your master plan went through a lot of non-motorized transportation improvements. You've discussed the fact that our, you know, your, your sidewalk networks and your non-motorized path networks need to be improved and that should be made a priority at the complete streets, as was discussed a little bit ago. So we've added the requirement that a sidewalk, a frontage sidewalk, be provided in the right-of-way of all sites fronting the street. So that, that way, you can have a continuous sidewalk connection running, you know, the length of a, of a neighborhood. You can fill in those gaps. If there's a gap that there's not a sidewalk for, and a site goes through site plan review for new development, you would check and make sure that they build that frontage sidewalk running along your frontage. So it's a way that you can get your sidewalk gap taken care of. We added lighting standards. So right now, I don't believe there are lighting standards in the zoning ordinance. We are requiring, so we're not, we're not requiring a brightness or a temperature at this point. We're, we're being, we're kind of phasing these lighting standards in a way where we're starting kind of pretty minimal. And if it's something the city wants to endeavor someday, because you want to regulate light brightness or temperature, maybe it's something you do later. But right now, we're adding the requirement that the light source be shielded or a full cutoff fixture. So that could even be in the, in the event a site undergoes redevelopment, and there's this existing wall pack light that's just providing incredible brightness and blinding everybody. You know, perhaps, so in that case, that fixture would actually need to put a shield, a shield on, so that that fixture's not sending light out, it's sending light down. So that you're providing for a better, better dark sky compliant. We're also capping a height of the fixture in a residential district, or when you're within a hundred feet of a residential district.
Do we need to carry over the specification from the signage about not, not lighting up the sky?
I think by requiring a full cutoff fixture, the cutoff, that, that means the light is directed down and not, not, you know, out and up.
I, I want to make a comment on this one too, because, so, there is a, two homes in my neighborhood, and they put up lighting on the outside of the house. It's affixed to the house. It kind of shines down, but shines out, but they're LED, and it is like daylight at night time. Thankfully, there's only the two houses that did it, because if that was being done in a more densely populated part of our city, and I'm going to get to this real quick, I've got a complaint right now on this, and we don't have anything to govern this. So you have a home that sits more parallel, because it's a, a smaller lot. And then you've got the house next door, the two adjacent driveways. This neighbor put a mercury vapor on the back of the house, and the bedroom to the house next to it is right here. So not only do they have the buzz of the mercury vapor, they've got the lighting coming into their bedroom at night too. And so would they, I would say no grandfathering this one, because then that way, we can start to enforce some of these things where this has been done in the city.
I would say that's-
Causing quality of life issues.
And this is something communities are grappling with all the time. This is a very good concern that I've heard from. A lot of communities are grappling whether or not to put it in a general code or a zoning code. Because when you deal with residences, it's really hard to make a determination on if that fixture is non-conforming or not.
Right.
Whereas the general code would compel compliance, you know, at the day the ordinance is adopted. And, and would require somebody to fix their fixture to make it compliant. But the, when you have lighting regulations in the zoning code, the property owner would argue, I'm grandfathered in. I never did anything to my fixture. I just put a new bulb in, which is general, you know, maintenance and repair of the fixture. And lighting gets very hard to regulate from a single-family residential standpoint. So right now, I would say if it's a new fixture, if it's a new fixture that's created and built into the side of the house or whatnot, they need to follow the, the lighting code here. And that needs to be a full cutoff fixture that's, that light source is shielded. But it gets, the lines blur when you're doing things like repairing an existing fixture, or you're adding a new bulb to an existing fixture. It's, it gets really hard to analyze from a, a, single-family residential site to another. That's a, I would like to hear what maybe the Saginaw staff has specifically recommendations on.
Even shielding, you know, even shielding the light. I, I, I guess I just don't understand why we have to have mercury vapor in the city.
That's a different question, and I was going to raise that. You could easily have that part of your zoning, just don't, just have it require LEDs.
Yeah, have it.
Just LEDs.
I don't think many companies are building mercury or evac-
You've got people that put them in.
Yeah.
And recent, and recently, this is, this is something that happened that I found out last year, so I got a complaint.
It's, but if you just made a requirement that they all be LEDs, it makes sense anyway.
LED face-down shielded.
Yeah. But we would, you need to know.
Still apply going forward.
You'd have to see this, these homes are talking about.
Going forward, LED only.
Yeah.
It'd be hard to determine whether or not that person, what date they installed that light. They could be grandfathered in when we adopt this ordinance.
But it'd be worth putting it in, at least, you know.
Yeah.
Makes sense environmentally, and it makes sense for the noise.
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, that's, LED is something we could definitely add in. Alright, pedestrian design, we have some brief requirements to ensure that the building entrance is always accessible from the public sidewalk via an internal sidewalk, or via crosswalks, or whatnot. Just to make sure that every site plan, you know, you're, is, ensure, you know, that, that connection, that constant connection is provided. And we're going to end with building standards. We're actually not- We're actually not, I recommend we don't discuss these tonight. We're at over two and a half hours. I think we should save these for Article III because they have a direct tie and on how Article III's mixed-use districts are built out. But you can maybe start to do some homework from now until you receive Article III on checking out what those building standards look like.
I have one question there for a definition. I don't know what a flex space is.
Yeah, we will provide that next meeting. Flex space is, so flex space is generally, it's generally going to be for the urban flex area when it's more so a building that might have been built out as an old warehouse or as an old manufacturing building, and we can't define it as multiple-story, single-story townhouse or urban house.
Okay.
But we can get into that a little bit at that meeting.
I get a picture of that, then.
In next meeting, we have definitions, too. So, the benefit of next meeting is you'll see the ordinance one in full on how everything kind of coordinates with each other, but our presentation is going to be focused on Article III specifically.
We need to take a few minutes and allow the public participation portion of this as well.
And I have a question over here. Yeah, I'm not sure. I've been studying all of the ordinance so far. I'm not sure where this would fit in, but since we talked about landscaping today, maybe it goes in section five. I would love for us to at least briefly consider a percent for art program that would allow some arts funding to come into Saginaw through private developers. There's lots of really good models that have been going on in the U.S. since Philadelphia. I think it started in 1959, and it's a great way to think about some arts funding. Maybe it's not even a whole percent for arts, but half a percent for arts, or a quarter of a percent for arts would be a great way to bring some resources into a comparatively arts-defunded zone.
I'm wondering if that's a program that maybe Cassie can-
Can I ask for a clarification?
Yeah.
What do you mean? The developer would be required to fund art?
Um, there's a couple ways that it works. One is, like, the, one of the most standard ways is that 1% of a private, usually it's development projects that are a certain budget threshold. 1% of the budget is designated for spending in the arts. It could be spent in museums or for a large sculpture that goes in the atrium of the new construction. There's a lot of different ways to work it. One of the other ways that might be more relevant for larger cities is the percent for art is often part of a negotiated benefit package where certain exceptions to the code are being asked for by the developer, or to the ordinances are being asked for by the developer, and so it's a concession. Like, we will let you build more stories if you also give back to the city in this way.
I'm not sure that's a zoning question.
It's often part of the zoning ordinances.
It could be.
I mean, you see communities do it for things like affordable housing, too, where you incent, you try to incentivize something that, ideally, it's gotta be recognized in your master plan because you wanna make sure that you have an intent for why you're doing it. That's a good question that we can look at. We'll take, we'll look at this on the side. I would think you'd want, you'd want some planning language in your master plan to build this. And I think it may not be appropriate if we spring it on developers right now if it wasn't formulated through the planning process. Or we can, we can take a look at it. Do you have any comments on it, City Attorney Lusk?
I would have to look at it.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd urge you to look at it. It makes sense. Whether or not we do it is a different question, but certainly look at it, and maybe you could make some suggestions for the master plan if nothing else.
Yeah. Or, or even if they try to partner with somebody that wants to do the art piece, because I actually had a person approach me, approached me today, and they'd like to do a sculpture, but they don't know where to put it. So, yeah, so these are things to look at. And I referred him to city staff.
And I would think, too, if we wanna just-
Good problem to have, just sculptures.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna make it easy so that a sculpture or piece of art can be placed on any point of a private property and not be subject to setbacks or whatever. I mean, that type of thing, we can think about putting in the ordinance.
Yeah, that's easy.
Yeah, and that was part of the council's strategic plan, meeting session two.
You can certainly put in something that, you know, if they're asking for concessions, they might be asked to do something like that.
Yeah, I really liked that example of you, you wanna decrease your setback a little bit. Well, what are you gonna put in?
Or, or maybe if DPW denies your street tree permit, maybe another alternative is you then provide some public art. So, I don't know, just as a, as a backup incentive towards landscaping or what.
It's an opportunity for when concessions are made, then there's a way for the benefit to flow back into the city as a whole.
Makes sense.
That's a good idea.
If we're done with our presentation tonight, we have a public comment, period?
Yeah, Chair, I would just remind you as well as the public, because this is a single-subject special meeting, that means public input would also be limited to the subject of tonight's special meeting. If any members of the public have other matters that they wish to address with the Planning Commission, I would encourage them to come back next Tuesday at 6 o'clock for the regular Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, Mr. Pappas?
Oh, yeah, come up with a regular order for that.
And they have three minutes.
Yep, we do have the three-minute timeline, so.
We don't have a clock, but we know three minutes.
Madam Mayor, Bill, Floyd, John, I know the four of you, and I know Casey over here, and welcome to the rest, but I'm, uh, I'm, I've been a resident of Saginaw since 1980. I spent 30 years working at VA Hospital as an acute care nurse, and for those that don't know, I won the first case in the nation for Asian origin Parkinson's. So, I have a little bit of a intelligence behind me. Now, for this ADU, Article IV, you're gonna allow them to build a small bungalow for mama, right? So Billy Bob builds a small bungalow for mama, and she has to live there. Now, after mama passes away, you're gonna allow them to rent that if they're living there. Now, and that's, that's the one thing you said. You said they have to live there. Now, what if Bobby Joe, over there in California, Billy Bob, twice the value of that home, and all of a sudden it becomes a ghost rental? How are you gonna deal with that? Are you gonna shut that house down or gonna have two rentals? You can't, you can't walk a plank and you have to, you have to plant a head. Now, as far as small trees, if you plant dwarf trees, you plant them with a graft above the ground and never bury the graft. What it is, they take a root, they put a, they put a branch in there, and it only grows the weight, the size of that branch. You bury that, you bury that graft, you got a tree, a full-sized tree. Now, Saginaw has done one thing right. Most of the lots are about 7,500 feet, right? They're 50 by 150. It's a common lot. The state of Michigan requires you to have 7,200 feet, so you got a 300-foot breathing room.
Our standard is 6,000.
No, no.
I'm looking at the code, for residents, for residents. So, anyway, we're doing some things right, but when they planted those trees in those vacant lots, and they planted some of them too close to the sidewalk, 10 years down the road, you're gonna be replacing sidewalks, move them more to the middle of the lot. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else with a public comment on tonight's topic?
Hello. My name is Carly Rose Hammond. I'm currently on the Saginaw City Council. Thank you guys all for your thorough examination and for Giffords, Webster, and our folks and the staff for putting together this very much-needed zoning ordinance update. It is a beast, and I appreciate it. I also have a huge list of potential building incentives from the affordable housing side. My approach to that, I haven't sent any of them along because the way that I have envisioned that going is, you know, creating a housing body, whether that's a committee on housing, addressing needs. We have a housing study coming out that's regional, has specific focus in Saginaw, coming out May 5th. So after that study comes out, what I would like to see is either alongside the county and some of the regional partners getting together a body to address those needs, or us just doing it in the city, but issuing recommendations which may have some further zoning input, but things that would incentivize development. For instance, further limiting mandatory parking requirements if a certain percentage of the room in units being built in a multiple, multi-family dwelling unit are affordable or low-income. So there, there is a whole plethora of best practices recommendations out there, whether you're looking at arts or whether you're looking at housing, that involve zoning code changes. So I would hope that even after the zoning rewrite, we're welcome to continuing these conversations and having an open door and open mind for those. I also, I live downtown. I live on the sixth floor of the Bancroft Building, and my window's face on the east side. So I can tell you from experience and from observing that never in a single day of my four and a half years living there have I seen full parking lots, any of them. What I see from my window, I see the beautiful Castle Museum rooftop. I see the Hoyt Library, a beautiful building. I see a parking lot, parking lot, parking lot, parking lot, parking lot, parking lot. Anybody says there's no downtown parking is, they, they want, what they want is a parking space where they drive in, but I, I think there's seriously a large group of people who don't understand how far you actually walk to go into Meyer from a parking space. Time yourself next time. Do a step study. Turns out, you're probably walking more to go to Red Eye if you park three blocks down than you actually walk to get into Meyer and go get your lemons. So, you know, it's a matter of perception. And what I would, I would really like to see, for myself, no parking minimum requirement. I think that we wanna build the downtowns and the old towns. We wanna build the city that we wanna see. And in my vision, that involves public transportation that is robust, that is used by everyone. That involves when people come in to get a Saginaw Spirit game, they're not, you know, huddling for their lives at the corner, you know, hoping they don't get hit. What that means is people who are coming to Saginaw Spirit games actually being a part of the downtown space and not just parking literally within 50 feet. So I think that we should, we should build for the city that we want. Also, as a last question, are these public, are these parking requirement, bicycle parking, public parking, access, misuse zonings, are these stackable, like 10% if you do parking and then 10% if you live near a public parking space? Just a question, but I'll get a few later. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Someone else wish to comment?
I'm Joyce Seals, and I live in the city of Saginaw, 2559 North Woodbury Street, Saginaw, Michigan, 4602. And I want to talk about tonight, as the gentleman here, I don't know his name, started out, he said that as he was reviewing the ordinances, he went down and he said he did, he recommended no changes to the marijuana laws, the ordinance. That's what he said. So that allows me the opportunity, since I disagree with him about that. I think that, I think it's great that our city council has decided to annually review our zoning ordinances because changes do occur. And we had a change in 2019 when they enacted the law, the marijuana law, and we decided to take advantage of that. No one knew the impact on the community, but we have some experience under our belt right now. So we have an opportunity to review that impact. And what has happened is that we have marijuana retailers who are placing their shops where they want indiscriminately, sometimes back a block apart with, with no regulations that keep them from doing these kinds of placement. Even the city of Detroit has taken time to review their process, and as a result, has placed a cap of 75 institutions of this site within their community. With our population at, for 2023, being 43,618, which would equate to only 5.19 facilities in our community, and we have 10 already. That, this is definitely an issue for me and many others. Pastor Chris Pyer left, and we have over 35 to 40 letters from legitimate businesses in this community who stand with us and think you need to review this thing. I'm asking you to review the literature, look at the data, look at the crime stats, look at all the things, and decide to either right-size and modify how we are allowing these issues to unfold. Now, you talked about some great things that night. I was really happy to talk about the arts, parking signs, trash receptacles, traffic lights, and pedestrian crossings and all of that. All that great things you talked about, if we don't regulate these places, nobody's wanting to come to this city, where all these marijuana places are on all of these quarters. So, take the time. Please, take the time. Even though you've thrown it off the table, I'm saying it's time to review it. Another city's already done it. We need to follow the pace they've done and do the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Anyone else to comment on tonight's presentation? If everyone's done, our next item of business is to ask for a motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned.